Okay, good evening, everyone. We are officially ready to start after some challenging technical details with our system here. And I appreciate everyone’s patience with the late start. We’ve got the system mostly up and running. It sounds like we still might have a few glitches with getting the agenda and some of the information online attached to the screenshot, but we are ready to get started with this public hearing. So, I’ll call the meeting to order and welcome you all to City Hall for tonight’s public hearing. It’s December the 13th, 2016, and we have a busy agenda tonight. Lots of people signed up to speak, and we’ll start with the roll call of council, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Robertson is in the chair. Counselor Louis, Counselor Stevenson, Counselor Deo, Counselor Jang, Counselor Reimer, Counselor Miggs, Counselor Ball has a leave of absence for medical reasons, Counselor Carr, Counselor Affleck, and Counselor DeGenova. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. And first I’ll acknowledge we are on the unceded homelands of the Musqueam, Musqueam, and Slaywithoo First Nations, and thankful for that. I will just make a couple of, actually, before we get to the announcements, just clarifying the procedure that we have as committee of the whole. I’ll just remind counsel that earlier in the year, the city clerk advised us that it’s not necessary for counsel to sit as committee of the whole during a public hearing, which has been our practice historically. However, in order to comply with the procedure bylaw, we do need a motion to go into committee of the whole, that that be put to a vote and failed, and that counsel sit as counsel, which means every motion has to be seconded. It’s a technical detail that we’re working to resolve in our procedures here, but I’ll ask for a motion to go into committee of the whole, moved and seconded, and any discussion. All those in favor? None in favor? Any opposed? Everyone’s opposed, so we will not go into committee of the whole. We will sit as counsel. And again, that means that every motion will need to be seconded to be considered by counsel. So, with that, I’ll just make a couple of announcements for tonight’s public hearing. We have a number of items. First of all, item number one, the miscellaneous text amendments, has been withdrawn from the agenda at the request of staff, so we are not considering item number one out of the eight items that are on the agenda right now. There have been changes as well with item two. That’s temporary modular housing, and the city has heard back lots of concerns raised by residents and neighbors about the lack of information and consultation provided about the temporary modular housing and the specific locations for the temporary modular housing. So, staff, certainly, the Director of Planning is recommending at this stage that we remove the four city-owned CD1 sites that were being considered in item number two from consideration. So, we will not be making any decisions on the four sites that were in the report, the city-owned sites being considered for temporary modular housing. There is a whole bunch of detail in a memo from staff that is on the city’s website, but that came to counsel that basically outlines the rationale for removing those four items, but proceeding with some of the other recommendations that are before counsel in that report around the general parameters for temporary modular housing. So, just to repeat, we will not be considering and deciding on any of the sites. That will be a future option for counsel. But if you’re here on item number two to speak to those specific locations, that will not be part of the agenda. So, unless you’re speaking to the general approach of considering temporary modular housing, I would suggest that this is not the night to be weighing in on specific locations, that that will be back to more consultation and information for the neighborhoods that are being considered as possible places for temporary modular housing. Okay, so that’s number two. There are eight items here altogether. We did have 23, 22 people registered on item number two. There may still be some speakers to that, given the changes. There are a number of speakers to item number six and item number eight in particular. But looking at the list, we do have an opportunity. We’d ideally like to hear from everybody tonight. I think it’s typically the goal of counsel, that we can hear from everybody. If we do not conclude hearing from all the speakers on these items tonight, we have Thursday night, December the 16th, as our backup, starting at 6:00 p.m. to hear the rest of the speakers. But generally, when we have roughly this number of speakers here, we can hear everyone in one evening. We might need to go a little later than 10:00 p.m. to do that, and counsel might not have the opportunity to make decisions on every item. That’s something that we can refer to future meetings, but our goal is usually to hear everyone who’s here to speak this evening. So, just a few announcements regarding those who are here to speak. You have five minutes to make your comments. We ask that you limit your comments to the merits of the report that’s being considered by counsel here, and we ask that you do state whether you support or oppose to the recommendations counsel is considering. Speakers may speak once for up to five minutes, and if you have further comments, you can submit them in writing to the clerk, or you can email them to mayorandcouncil@vancouver.ca. If you are speaking on behalf of three or more people or three or more organizations, you get an extra three minutes to make comments. We just ask that those who you are representing are here as well and are not going to be speaking. And you don’t have to use all of your five minutes. You can be more concise if you wish. The timer is on the podium over there, right by the mic, and I will let you know as you get close to your five minutes. You may have questions from counsel as well. Counsel has opportunity to ask questions of speakers. As speakers, you are under no obligation to answer those questions. That’s entirely at your discretion, but we do offer that opportunity for some back and forth after you’ve made your comments. And that’s the deal on speaking. We’re ready to dive into our agenda. As I said, if we don’t finish hearing from speakers tonight, we will go to Thursday night at 6:00. And with that, we will start with item number two, as number one is withdrawn. And item number two is the text amendment for temporary modular housing definition and regulations, proposed amendments to existing city-owned CD1 sites and design guidelines. And I’ll ask Madam Clerk for you to read the application and the summary of the correspondence that we’ve received, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability to make amendments to the zoning and development bylaw to introduce a definition and associated regulations for temporary modular housing. Design guidelines are also proposed to support the implementation of this innovative housing type. The application also included proposed amendments to allow temporary modular housing on four city-owned CD1 sites. However, a memorandum was introduced earlier today to revise recommendation A in the policy report dated October the 26th, 2016, to remove the four city-owned CD1 sites from consideration for temporary modular housing at this time. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the revised recommendation A contained in the memorandum and recommendations B through D in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, counsel has received three pieces of correspondence in support of the application, 44 pieces of correspondence opposed to the application, and one piece of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received on this application up to 4:00 p.m. today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, and we have Gil Kelly here, the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability, to give us some opening comments. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I wanted to just introduce this item briefly and acknowledge and amend the mayor’s introductory comments as well, and I’ll be kicking it over to senior staff from Housing and Planning very shortly, but I just wanted to appear here to say that I feel the thrust of this item is still important for you to consider, which is that the Vancouver Affordable Housing Authority, for one, is very keen on prototyping a new response to a portion of the affordable housing need and crisis in the form of modular housing, which is not currently recognized in our Planning and Development Code. We also, with them and with Housing, identified a few sites that we thought that are city-owned, this prototype, which was successfully demonstrated, I would say, at Robson Street in the middle of town a month or so ago, got a lot of attention, could be prototyped and deployed in a pilot fashion, anyway, to house people on a number of city-owned sites temporarily. My late memo to you today is essentially trying to bifurcate those two pieces of the decision, which is, I recommend that you go ahead and adopt the items that do add the definition to the code that would enable this kind of housing and the associated regulations and guidelines that pertain to that, but that you defer action, and I would recommend withdrawing from this hearing the action that actually rezones particular sites for this purpose. In my view, the details that would apply to those sites are not sufficient to conduct a thorough community consultation on it, and I don’t think there was really the opportunity to engage the nearby neighborhoods appropriately and robustly to this point. And so, we would follow behind and do that on one or more of these sites or potentially other sites in the future, and come back to you with a de novo hearing on those aspects that are site-specific. And I believe Randy Pokarski, who will be coming up next, the Assistant Director of Planning, will explain in more detail exactly which parts of the report previously forwarded to you we’re still asking for you to act on and which parts we’re delaying. But I think, I just wanted to be here in person to explain my rationale for sending you this kind of late-breaking news and to apologize for members of the community who may have come out thinking that those four sites were still moving forward at this point. So, this actually allows us, I think, the opportunity to engage those communities in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Pokarski, welcome.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. We have a brief presentation here, and before I start, I just want to notice that we have a number of people to speak to this should counsel have some questions. We have the Chief Housing Officer, Mukhtar Latif, Director of Housing Policy, Abigail Bond, Heather Burpee, Senior Planner in the Planning Department, and Celine Maboulis, who will be also speaking on housing policy tonight. So, we just want to... All right. Are we taking... Ah, wrong one. Okay. Thank you. So, to begin, I’m already striking out here. There we go. Oops. Okay, there we go. My apologies. So, as councils aware, there was a yellow memo issued late this afternoon and now posted on the website. And in that yellow memo, we have modified the recommendation A to only refer to an application to amend the zoning and development bylaw to introduce a definition and regulations for temporary modular housing, generally in accordance with Appendix A. The revised recommendation, Appendix, sorry, A2, that’s been removed, was the recommendation referring to the four individual sites that are listed there for you, and I won’t go through them in detail, but they were generally Grandview Highway, Nanamo Street, on East Marine Drive, and on Copley and Viness. We think it’s important to notice that although we’ve amended the recommendations for the individual sites, that we continue with both recommendation A and the two other recommendations. Recommendation B speaks to that, subject to the approval of the amendment of the zoning and development bylaw, that the temporary housing guidelines presented in Appendix C also be approved in principle. These will be brought forward at the time of enactment. Finally, as the Director of Planning spoke to, that we have an opportunity to further engage the development, sorry, the community in pursuing further sites for temporary modular housing as we move forward on a priority basis. We’d like to just beforehand it off to Celine to follow up on the housing policy and implementation strategy, just to notice that the first two recommendations really speak to providing the regulatory framework that will allow the temporary modular housing to be implemented much more broadly. It will give us an opportunity to go and then advocate for this kind of housing, not just on city-owned sites, but on other sites, whether they’re nonprofit or private or other government. With that, I’ll then turn it over to Celine, and we’ll be available for questions. Thank you.
I’d just like to provide a little bit of background context. The Housing and Homelessness Strategy sets out the key housing priorities for the city. The strategy has three strategic directions that cover the whole of the housing continuum, which has a very strong focus on renters and rental housing. The Mayor’s Task Force on Housing Affordability, which was struck in 2012, included further recommendations on increasing the supply and diversity of our affordable housing stock. We’re now halfway through our 10-year Housing and Homelessness Strategy, and we face significant housing affordability challenges in terms of complexity and scale, and as a result, we’re in the process of resetting our strategy, which we’ll report back in the new year. Finally, the Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency, which was created in 2014, has a goal to deliver 2,500 units of affordable housing by 2021 through innovative partnerships, and temporary modular housing is part of this commitment. One of the key questions we are asked is what is modular? Basically, there are sectional prefabricated buildings that consist of multiple sections called modules. It’s an off-site construction method differing from other more conventional methods such as traditional stick-built construction. Established modular providers can deliver up to five modules a day. These modules are then transported to the building site and are assembled by crane. Modular construction process allows buildings to be stacked, relocated, and reconfigured, and is a creative solution that allows housing units to be moved from site to site as future There are benefits associated with temporary modular housing. Vancouver faces an unprecedented housing affordability challenge, which requires a new and sustained effort on the part of the city. Ensuring that appropriate strategies are in place to maintain and create new affordable housing is essential in addressing the needs of current and future residents. Modular construction is an innovative approach to expedite additional housing supply. While temporary in nature, it allows us to take advantage of vacant or underutilized sites pending development to increase the housing supply while more permanent housing is being built. The slide here shows you a temporary modular housing pilot that’s being placed on 1500 Main Street, or the new address is 220 Terminal. Vaha, the Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency, completed an RFP process, and Horizon North was selected as the proponent to deliver the units. Their proposal included a flexible design that allows units to be reconfigured in future projects. It also includes a relocatable foundation system. This project that you see here includes 40 self-contained studios with both indoor and outdoor amenity space. It’ll form part of the city’s nonprofit operation stock, and occupancy is targeted for mid-February 2017. During the recent readdress summit, Horizon North put one of these units on the Robson Street Plaza, and there was a lot of tension as people went in and walked around and had a chance to be in the space. This is a new construction technique, but it is adaptable with regards to both unit layout and building configuration. For the 220 Terminal Street project, it was selected because the zoning permitted the smaller unit sizes, and site servicing allowed for an expedited timeline to deliver these necessary units. So, as Randy noted earlier, staff are recommending that the zoning and development bylaw be amended to introduce a definition and associated regulations for temporary modular housing, as well as approved temporary design guidelines to enable opportunities for additional temporary modular housing supply. The intent of the amendments to the zoning and development bylaw being recommended are to add a definition of temporary modular housing under dwelling uses. Temporary modular housing would be exempt from the minimum floor area requirements, allowing these units to be as small as 250 square feet for a studio. It would be required to be used for social housing, and it would be a conditional approval by the Director of Planning. All development permits issued would be time-limited to five years, with the Director of Planning able to extend the permit for an additional five years. As part of the development permit process, the Director of Planning would also be required to notify adjacent property owners and others deemed necessary, as well as consider all applicable policies and guidelines adopted by counsel in approving applications. In addition to the area guidelines that would be considered in approving these projects, the report also recommends approval of temporary modular housing guidelines. The intent of these guidelines is to establish principles for temporary modular housing to help ensure this housing type is of high quality and well-considered design to ensure an appropriate fit in various neighborhood contexts. The guidelines address issues from height to density, parking and loading, landscaping, building separation, exterior cladding and architectural detailing, and interior requirements to ensure livability for tenants, among other features. Finally, the report directs staff to explore opportunities to enable additional supply. In terms of next steps, by amending the zoning and development bylaw to create new definition associated regulations, counsel would be creating opportunities for future temporary modular housing. In addition to further exploration and feasibility review of city-owned sites, staff will work with our partners to identify opportunities to bring other sites forward. Temporary modular housing could also be added to future large-site rezonings to support the creation of much-needed temporary social housing pending development of a specific site. Finally, based on the feedback received to date, staff will also undertake a more robust community and neighborhood engagement and consultation strategy on any proposed temporary modular housing sites prior to bringing them to referral for counsel consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the update on where we stand with this item, and a much shorter version of certainly what was proposed in the original public hearing agenda. So, we’ll have a few questions from counsel, and then we’ll go, if there are speakers here, if there are registered speakers. There were 22 people registered to speak prior to the four locations being removed from consideration, so we may have some speakers here to speak to the rest of it. But first, we’ll have questions for staff from our counsel. Counselor Reimer, first.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson. My questions are all procedural, not on the content, so I’m probably directing them to you, Mr. Kelly or Mr. Pokarski. Is it possible to get an updated correspondence summary on what... So, we had the clerk read the correspondence summary on who was opposed and who was in favor, members. My quick scan of it is very few of those related to the matter that is left under public hearing, which is the Section A1. So, could we get an updated correspondence summary before the end of the meeting? Okay. Second question, I appreciate it’s no longer the subject of the public hearing, so I’m not looking for a question and answer on it, but more a sense of, for the public that is here, that is interested in specific sites, when and how that consultation that you referred to would happen and how they would find out about it.
Yeah, we certainly have the letters of interest that start as the notification list, but I think what we need to do as a city staff, and again, I’m relying on my partners as well in housing, to go back through a list of potential sites and really vet the constraints and relative attributes on any of those sites, and see which ones really ought to merit taking forward in the process. As well, I think, as Randy mentioned, this certainly would be open to churches or other civic groups and so forth to come forward. So, you’ll probably see, and we would engage the public around sites that actually show real potential for this, and so then we’d notify those neighbors as well and have a consultation with them, probably with at least the two agencies, if not Vaha as well in that, depending on their involvement.
Okay, so it would be publicly posted, all of the people who had registered tonight and we had contact information for would be contacted, and then any specific site, it would be the radius around that site would be notified as well. Last question, so it’s a bit challenging. I know four of them are geographic, like the four that have been removed, but if you can just really draw a line around what we’re considering tonight specifically.
So, I think, as was in the presentation, what we’re asking you to do is to adopt essentially a definition for temporary modular housing into the planning and zoning code that would enable a site to come forward through a public hearing and public consultation process and have something that it can hook onto as an allowed use under the zoning code. That would require a rezoning of that specific site, at least in most cases, to enact that definition. And so, we would be in a position that we’re not in now, which is really to consult with the community about the specifics of the proposal on that site. So, we’re only asking for you to put the definition and then the associated regulations that were mentioned. If you do a modular housing site, this is how small it can be, these are the basic design guidelines that obtain in any of those cases, but it would not tonight apply to any specific site in town.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor DeGenova, questions?
Thank you very much. I had a question regarding accessibility of modular housing in general. Counselor Reimer covered some of my questions regarding the process of looking at each site. Actually, I’m pleased to see that each site will be looked at differently. Regarding accessibility, my question for staff is modular housing, as we see it now, if we were to prove it tonight, what uses would it have? Would it also meet the needs of seniors with mobility issues, and would it meet the standards or couldn’t meet the standards to adaptability level three for persons with disabilities?
Correct. So, for example, at 1500 Main, it would meet the accessibility requirements, which is currently 10%. So, for example, at 220 Terminal Street, out of the 40 units, four are accessible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jang.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to staff for withdrawing those four sites and going back to the community. It’s my neighborhood too, so I’m glad that was done. I’ve heard modular housing referred to as things like trailer park and things like that, and I hope that when, my question is, is that when we go back to the community with different proposals, they’ll actually have a big drawing of the proposal, what it’ll look like. Certainly, the examples we saw here were not trailer park-like at all.
No, in fact, that whole technology has advanced quite a bit, and as we alluded to, there was actually a demonstration model in Robson Plaza earlier this fall, which got a lot of attention, a lot of positive feedback. Part of the reason for deferring any consideration of specific sites tonight is so that some specific illustrations and diagrams can be developed for any particular site that this might be advanced on.
Great, thank you. Quick question to housing. In the presentation, Ms. Maboulis, you referred to as this is all for social housing. Can you describe who we’d expect to be living in the modular housing for a short time and as they transition to permanent housing?
So...
The types of populations that you would expect to be accessing modular housing?
Well, we would look, each of the potential sites coming forward would go out to an RFP around the type of housing and the target population that it would serve, but in terms of incomes, we would be targeting low-to-moderate income households.
Okay.
But it could be a mix, it could be families, it could be seniors, it could be individuals, it could be a range of target tenant demographics.
Great, thank you very much.
Counselor Carr, questions?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I do echo Counselor Jang’s thanks for withdrawing the four sites and providing a process for reexamining sites in the future. One of my questions is around process and follow-up to Counselor Reimer’s questions. We had a considerable number of people who wrote to us to talk not only about being involved in a discussion beforehand, but also the language issue, so to make sure that materials are prompted in a variety of languages, and also, at the minimum, to make sure that there is, at least in many languages, translated sort of key words like “this is really important” or where they can follow up on that. So, I’m looking for reassurance that that issue will be... So, I'm looking for reassurance that that issue will be dealt with as we move forward. I'm seeing heads nod.
Yes, we'll use plain speak in multiple languages.
Great, okay, that's good, thank you. My second question has to do with the size. It's as small as 250 square feet. Do we have any sense of a maximum or, you know, larger sizes? And the reason I ask that is that I was lucky enough to be able to do a sort of onsite field trip around modular housing in Saskatchewan, and I could not tell the difference between that housing and regular housing that was built. It was incredible that most of the units were two and three bedroom, it was a family housing site. So, I'm wondering if we are thinking only at the bottom limit only, but not the upper limit in terms of size?
I think as a technology, the definition of modular is that the module that can, and many of these could be combined to make larger suites. How those are, what choices are made on any given site, for what population would be then a site-specific matter, but the technology would allow a combination of modules?
Yes, it does actually state in the report that the things could be recombined. And is there a particular reason why the sites, why it is temporary, i.e. why it must be moved from the site? That is part of the definition now?
I'll take a crack at that one. Yeah.
I'm Mukhter Latif, Chief Housing Officer. The reason that these sites are being used on a temporary basis is because they're waiting for redevelopment, so there's longer-term plans for those sites. So, as with many of these vacant sites across the city, what we're looking to do is make best use of those and utilize those on a temporary basis, and this creative approach has allowed us to do that in a cost-effective way, allows us to move those sites, the modules, to another site once the site becomes ready for redevelopment.
Sort of like the temporary community gardens that we see on some sites waiting for redevelopment.
That's right, it's making best use of those sites whilst they're waiting longer-term redevelopment options to come forward.
And I think one of the reasons too for this particular definition being added to the bylaw is that these, by definition, are not permanently affixed to the ground. They're hooked up to utilities and they're stable, but they're not permanently affixed to the ground, and so they are movable, and therefore, we're seeing them as temporary by definition, and that temporary period can be extended.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Okay, that's all the council questions, so we're going to go to our speakers list and see who we have here to speak to item number two. First, registered speaker is Niku Buramand, followed by Melissa Walter, and I'll just call out names from there. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for withdrawing the four sites, thank you. On behalf of Copley Community Orchard members, I'd like to ensure that we are part of the process, not all of us are residents around the area, so we just want to make sure that we are consulted in future consultations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and Melissa Walter is next.
Is this the mic? Okay, I'm speaking as a member of the orchard also and as also as a neighbor. Again, just to thank council, thank you for withdrawing the specific sites and looking forward to meaningful consultation on this issue with the city.
Okay, thank you. And speaker number four is Heidi Carson. Is Heidi Carson here? Not here at this moment. Speaker number five, Joe Brouman, followed by Stephen Kesting.
Hi, I'm also here for the one, for the site that was going to be built on Vanessa. I also have my doubts about the cost efficiencies of this modular housing, given the infrastructure needed to support them and moving them there, and I don't know how long the life they'll be there, but the cost of moving them out, like after 10 years, the building itself wouldn't be worth anybody buying, it would need moving and renovating, and that would, and the cost of moving it, I have my doubts to the cost efficiencies of it. If you're going to build something like family housing that should go there, it should be built once and for all, and that would be it, and that's my concerns.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. Stephen Kesting is next, followed by Wallace Choi. Okay, Councilor DeGenova, you have a question for Mr. Brouman?
Thank you. I could have asked the other speakers this also. You said that you were here for a specific site, but now the sites have been withdrawn.
Right.
If a specific site was to come forward, would you likely be coming back to speak to us regarding a specific site?
A good chance of that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Stephen Kesting, next speaker.
Mayor and council, thank you for hearing us. Also, thank you for the slowing down of this process. As a resident of the neighborhood, I can know firsthand, there's a ton of anxiety when your letter first broke to some residents. I talked to probably 50 to 100 people in the last week, it's the week before Christmas, sort of, last week of school for the kids, and even with all the constraints and all the snow, there were a ton of people were really freaked out by some things that are clearly not going to happen and some things that could happen, but I don't want to talk specifically about the site. For future consultation, somebody already brought up, it went out in English. The community, you know, there's a ton of Tagalog, there's a ton of Mandarin, there's a ton of Cantonese speakers. It also only went out to homeowners, as far as I can tell, because when I went and talked to people, a ton of people hadn't heard, so as far as I know, many long-term residents, including people who've rented there forever, didn't know about it. So, it was only through people talking and going to door-to-door that they were notified of this for future things. If it could go out in multiple languages, I would also urge you to send it to the renters as well as the homeowners. And as far as the building construction, the container house building or modular building, not that concerned about that. My brothers, my own brother's done a ton of work in the container house development. You can build it really, really nicely. I think most of the concern in the community was around the social impacts, because you've got such extreme density, right, 250 square foot, potentially, you can cram a whole lot of those into a small space, and if you parachute in, I mean, they're temporary structures, but my understanding is it's potentially a very transient population through there. I think the 1500 Main Street has got a one-year residence period. If you go with the same thing at other sites, it's going to be a continuous circuit of people through there who aren't necessarily going to have any kind of ownership over the community or sense of ownership in the community. And if you're talking an at-risk population, that completely changes things as well. I mean, I know that, we're not talking about the specific sites, but I've dealt with a ton of crime, and my car's been stolen twice the last couple of years, I've had break-ins, I've had stuff stolen, I've called the cops probably 10 times to deal with various drug addicts in the neighborhood. So, that, I think, would be a live, you know, a third rail issue for the community. So, I just think we very much need to give consideration to the social implications of the, of dropping a large population into areas, especially when the residential areas and they're not fortified downtown condominiums with 12 layers of passcodes, retinal scans, and gates, they're houses that were built in the 50s, and, you know, I don't want to be putting up razor wire around my property and any more cameras. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for being here. And next up is Wallace Choi, followed by Suzette Helena.
Mayor and City Council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Wallace Choi, and I currently live at 3536 Walker Street in Vancouver since January of 1985 as a homeowner with my family. We received a letter from the City Planning Department regarding these temporary modular homes for low or fixed-income single residents that would be located less than a block from my residence. I have a list that was going to strongly oppose this project, but due to the following reasons below, but after hearing the latest news today, I am speaking tonight to thank the city for their amendment and good faith promise to pursue meaningful discussion and consultation with the community. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight, and Suzette Helena, followed by Fatima Maderos.
I just want to say thank you for amending this motion, because we were freaked out and because we didn't know what was going on, and we look forward to a meaningful conversation in the future about what's really going down.
Okay, thank you. Fatima Maderos, followed by Alicia Barcello.
I agree with everything my neighbors just said. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming. You guys are quick.
Councilors, when I see that a number of towers are being built in the city, none of these towers are, the people who build them are not required to include social housing in any of these towers, not even 10% social housing. And in order to appear to address the problem of housing inaccessibility, you are now putting forward the temporary modular housing project. I think that there are many problems with this, with this project, with this perspective. One of the problems that I see right away is that you are telling us that there are two kinds of people in this city. One is the kind that has the money to buy a condo or a house, a regular-type housing, and the other kind is the people that you can shove into tiny units, 250 square feet, square foot units, and you can shove into housing that is temporary. And if I understood the discussion correctly, this temporary means that any time you like, you can eliminate the temporary modular housing and allow some developer to come and build some real stuff, which will be a big tower that will make money and will produce absolutely no social housing. Now, you've only shelved the proposed sites. There are other dangers that the people who live around Trout Lake apparently face or are going to face. I heard not too long ago that one of your plans is to surround Trout Lake with, is to rezone around Trout Lake so that what is now a beautiful lake and a beautiful park and quite accessible becomes an overcrowded mess. I would like to request that you give the temporary modular housing a lot more time, a lot more meaningful consultation. What does meaningful consultation mean? Does it mean that you hold another open house and people go and look at writings that they don't have the technical knowledge to fully understand? Why can't meaningful consultation mean a forum where you have a speaker in favor and a speaker against, and you invite the community, and you have open debate? Why can't that mean that? Why can't the community not be allowed to say, "No, I have an orchard, I have a piece of green space. Gardens are the lungs of the city. Do not touch them." So, you have to take communities a little more seriously here. The fact that we're not sitting there doesn't mean that our opinion doesn't count. I have been paying taxes for more than 30 years, and I'll be damned if I'm going to see my city destroyed by people who only think of the next election campaign. And I don't want any questions.
Okay, our next speaker is Biliana Ward, and she's followed by Angela Crudo. Welcome.
First of all, thank you very much for withdrawing the four sites from the proposal tonight. I would like to speak to the fact that I believe very strongly that modular housing should not be used to cover current existent, fully utilized green spaces. As the previous speaker mentioned, green spaces are the lung of the city. They're also incredibly important to parents with young children, such as myself. I use them every weekend, they're extremely, extremely valuable to a community. In addition to that, and I will focus on green spaces in general, because you are potentially going to consider such sites across the city. Green spaces are rare, and Copley Orchard is an example of that. They bring the local community together. They're productive and inclusive ways to make people feel a part of a community. Many of us are new to the city, and this is one way in which we feel very welcome and we feel like this is our home. I believe that the housing crisis is a serious and extremely pressing issue, but bulldozing over green spaces is not and should never be the solution. The damage this would cause to community has not been considered by City Hall, and it's very easy to destroy and very difficult to rebuild. So, I propose an amendment that you do not cover existing green spaces with modular housing, and I hope that the city of Vancouver is going to be able to tackle its many challenges in a productive way that doesn't damage its community spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, and Angela Crudo, next speaker. Is Angela Crudo here? Looks like I've got the whole Crudo family. Angela, Maria, Mariah, is Mariah Crudo here? Alicia Crudo? Joseph Crudo? Joseph is here. Welcome, Mr. Crudo.
Yes, good evening. My name is Joseph Crudo, I live at 3583 Walker Street. I've been living there for 52 years, March 67, and I've been paying tax every year. Now, my question is why this happened in East Vancouver and nothing happens in the West Vancouver? Now, I, maybe, maybe I'm too forward with this, but I really think that we are taken advantage of. My wife just passed away March 1st, and I'm slapped with this beautiful gift from you people that you're going to put this major homes, and whatever happened next, we don't know. Once they're there, they stay there. You say five years, an option of another five years, then, who knows, maybe then 20 or 30 or 40, or I won't be here to witness that, but I think that's morally, that's what happened. So, I hope that this will not happen in our neighborhood. There's a lot of children over there, there will be a lot more corruption than it is. And why doesn't it happen in the West Vancouver? Why does happen in East Vancouver? All this happened in the East, and why? That's my question, why? Are we stupid? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here. And Gino Crudo? Is Gino Crudo here? Not here, okay, thank you. Flora Dickinson, Speaker number 18. Flora Dickinson here. No takers. How about Mark Freeman? Mark Freeman is Speaker 19, followed by Tanya Campbell.
Hello, I'd like to thank city staff for making the changes late today, that's very pleasing, and I'd like to make one other comment, which is, has anybody considered the building code aspects of these containers living in earthquake zone? With a temporary foundation, temporary buildings, it's something that needs to be considered. I know Vancouver, I believe, has its own building code, so something to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. And Tanya Campbell's next, followed by Andy Ho.
Hello, my name is Tanya Campbell, I live on Copley Street. I came with the idea to say thank you for looking at and making changes to slow down the conversation. I have concern when I hear the conversation and the presentation from the staff here, they said the words like, "We're going to continue community conversation." There was no community conversation, let's be clear. A letter came to our home, it was not easy to read, 10 days later, we're here. So, if anybody thinks we're going to continue community conversation, it needs to start, and we haven't started it yet, so I do -- So I do hope that this community conversation is real conversation and not just another letter that makes it into our mailbox at this time of year as well. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, you have a question from Councilor DeGenova?
Thank you very much. Can you tell me what you would consider meaningful consultation to be?
I would want to see us sitting down and actually talking and not, not being talked to, but actually having a dialogue, because that is how communication is, is back and forth. Right now, we've just been told through text, it'd be good to actually sit down and make a plan, because it's not, it's not us saying, "No, this is," you know, we know there's a housing crisis, but we need to have a conversation, how this fits in our community, right? Just because someone has a plan and doesn't live with us, these new neighbors will be living with us, and we need to make sure that they, that we all work together in our homes.
Thank you. Another question I have is, this item has been revised.
Yes.
So that it's not site-specific. But if the site that you came to speak to tonight was added, and it was referred and came back to public hearing, or however staff choose to introduce it, would you be compelled to come and speak again?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Andy Ho, Speaker number 22. Is Andy Ho here? Not here. Is Bree Cropper here? There she comes. And then it's Speaker number 24, Tim Layman. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, Council, and thank you. Short. And Gil Kelly as well. Thank you for the amendments to this proposal. I've vocalized most of my concerns with this in the letter I wrote to Council on the 9th. And as well, this morning, I was interviewed on CBC Radio on the early edition and spoke with Rick Clough about several of my concerns with this, mainly around process, first of all, which I think we've all agreed we're going to address going forward. But secondly, I do have concerns with the temporary nature of this development. I am a firm believer that this city needs more permanent social housing that's accessible and affordable for families and individuals and seniors. So that's what I want to see more of personally. I'm not sure that this temporary modular style of housing is really the right way that we should be looking at things going forward. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thank you for coming tonight. And is Tim Layman here, Speaker number 24? Our last registered speaker is Les Brown. And then I'll call to see if there's any more on this item.
Thank you. My questions were site-specific, so they are now redundant. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And that's all of the registered speakers, so I'll call, as is our practice, three times to see if there are more speakers. Are there any more speakers on item number two? Please step up to the microphone. Welcome, Ms. Wong.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. My name's Mina Wong, and I'll be speaking, again, some of the speakers already mentioned about the temporary, the lack of permanency of this temporary modular homes. This reminds me of the temporary modular classrooms. Now, we all remember, we all, we all still remember, like, I know that what those classrooms cost us financially, as well as the health of students and teachers. So that's why I asked the council to reconsider going down to this path of temporary modular housing. The second point I would like to raise is mental wellness. I don't know if the staff had done any research in this area. One is the temporary modular housing, they're small. 250 square feet, did I get it right, right? Per unit. And no consideration of common space. So that means the people living there will be basically stay in that room, and many of them probably single occupancy. I don't know how many people will be living in there? You don't know? Okay.
We could answer council questions, I think.
Okay, thank you. It just, I question if the staff have ever done any research or study in this area, a small space, how would that affect a person's mental wellness? And the other thing is, the temporary modular housing, they're temporary. What is the impact on a person's mental well-being when they cannot live in a place that's a permanent? Similar things with shelters in Vancouver. Shelters and temporary modular housing, they are not homes for people. So I would like to see if the council would direct the staff to do some research and study in this area, how the small space and temporary nature of the housing affect people's mental wellness. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers for item number two? Question for the speaker? Okay, I can see that. Councilor DeGenova?
Hello, thank you, Ms. Wong, for your questions. I'm just wondering, as we move forward to looking at different forms of housing, especially affordable housing, and it's not getting much more affordable because everyone's taxes were raised today in council, but looking, looking forward towards affordable housing and the fact that Vancouver right now currently is a zone, does not allow for micro suites. And I'm not saying micro suites are for everyone, but micro suites could be an option. And if well-planned, I've heard planners say before in other cities that micro suites, your common living space, your city is your living room, you know, libraries, public spaces. How do you feel about that? If these modular housing spaces were well-planned and accessible, and perhaps there were even some family dwelling units? And I will ask staff as to how many people will be able to reside in each.
Well, you know, if you look at what's going on with Joyce Street, I would like to talk about that later, but since you brought up the question, the Joyce Street, you're increasing building all the towers up to 30-story high, and yet there's no increase in or new community center in that area. You'll be bringing in thousands of new people, residents in that area. So it is a big question for me. I would like to see if the temporary modular housing is going to be built. Consider some common living room or common meeting room facilities built into that temporary modular housing. So it's just a thought of extending that, because certainly the city, just not enough green space, not enough amenities out there.
Okay, but you would be open to the idea, and this isn't a micro suite, but 250 square feet around there could be a micro suite or a living space for likely a single person. Would you support that if it was well-planned and had the support of the community?
Well, I have to look at, what is well-planned?
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor Stevenson?
Any more questions?
I was wondering about your statement that you would question whether the staff had looked at this kind of research. We have professional staff that, I have no doubt, that have looked at all of these questions about the well-being of people. They don't just throw up buildings. And there are other places where there's models. So I'm wondering why you would question the staff on this, as if you're the only one that's looked into it.
Oh, I have no doubt that you have very effective staff here, and I think they work very hard.
They do.
Under the direction of the council.
They, they, they are professional.
My question is, have the council ever specifically asked for report on the mental well-being of these people living in small and temporary space?
That's what we have professional staff for.
No, I asked for report in this area. So far, I don't think I've seen any reports in this area.
Of course, it's a very important area, that obviously they would take into consideration. Anyway, thank you very much, Ms. Wong.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thank you for being here, Ms. Wong.
Thank you.
And I'll call one last time. Are there any more speakers here for item number two? Okay, we are done, done with that speaking. So that's all for our speakers list. We'll close the speakers list, and as we've had very little correspondence since 5:00 PM, we'll close public comments. We'll move to any final comments from staff. You wish to make any more, any final comments for council to consider?
I would just say that a number of the questions that came up would be addressed through the more site-specific proposals, including the questions you heard from the last speaker around common areas and typically number of people per unit and other site amenities. Would the company any of these proposals? Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kelly. So final round of questions for staff from council. Councilor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I think I'll start with the last question that came up. My understanding from reading the regulations is that it was, it's required that these developments have a common outdoor space, as well as a high-quality amenity room to very much answer this question of, of greater social space for people living in smaller units. Is there anything else beyond those two things?
Yes, if you, if you look, the intent of the design guidelines are to specifically address those issues. So they refer to livability and features such as adequate light, indoor and outdoor amenity space, access to green space, to ensure that those units are livable.
Great. Yeah, I didn't even talk about the lights and windows and that kind of thing. It's true. Okay, so that is addressed. Thank you. How many people are expected in the smaller units, 250 square feet being the smallest?
It's a studio, so it's intended for one person.
One person, okay. And for the two-people units, are we, do we have any guidelines around the kind of size of space of units for those?
Yes, again, that's referred to in the design guidelines that are before council this evening.
Right, okay. In terms of the building code, are there any concerns around temporary structures being of greater hazard in terms of earthquakes?
According to my Vaha colleague, it's, these units would be built to the full seismic standards under the Vancouver Building Bylaw.
Right, and it doesn't matter if they aren't affixed to the ground in terms of permanent?
Correct.
Correct. I'm hearing lots of murmurs that it sounds like it's, it's all good. I just wanted to make mention, some people talked about the need for social housing. It does talk about social housing. These must be social housing. I'm just verifying that when we use that term, we don't mean all of the units will be social housing. Do we mean in this case that it will be our definition of social housing, which is at least one-third of the units in any one development will be at the hills, right? And it will be run by a nonprofit or government?
Hi, I'm Abby Bond, Director of Housing Policy and Projects. I'd like to confirm, obviously, we've talked about the need for social housing. These units, in terms of our definitions, a minimum of them must rent at the BC Housing Income Limits of 30%. However, it's our intention, one of the reasons we're doing temporary modular housing, is so that we can deepen the level of affordability. These units are very cost-effective to build, and so we anticipate being able to deliver a far greater degree of affordability, potentially with a mix from welfare up to the BC Housing Income Limits. So we're anticipating that these units will go far beyond what we're able to do in brand-new buildings.
Great, okay, good, thank you. Regarding transient population, somebody was concerned, one of the speakers, about the transient, transient nature and that maybe people would only be there a year. Can you give me some sense of feel around how, who we expect might be living in these, in these modular units? And do we have any sense of longevity, with a goal in mind around that?
I guess, again, as we bring forward specific sites, we would bring more information about the target population, whether it be families or seniors or single people. All of the tenants would be under a residential tenancy agreement, so there would be some security of tenure. Obviously, the temporary nature, there would be an obligation, should the site be redeveloped and the temporary modular housing would be relocated, that a robust relocation plan would be put in place for those tenants, adhering to the guidelines and policies that we've set out here at the city.
Okay, thank you. And I have one final question, and that is, in terms of notice provided, what kind of notice do we give to people who are renting in the areas adjacent to potential sites in the future that will be considered, as opposed to homeowners?
I think based on the feedback that we've received, we would undertake a more robust community notification process, perhaps similar to the work that we do when we have shelters. So the standard process is a two-block radius around the site, mail out to owners. For the shelters, we extend that to a wider area, as well as we do, we work with the company to deliver notices to rental buildings. So I think moving forward, that's something that we would definitely consider.
I think that sounds like it would be welcome. Thank you.
Okay, questions from Councilor Jiang?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We've heard a lot of comment about modular housing, what it is, what it isn't, what they think, what people think it is, what people think it isn't. I think what we haven't talked about is that we have one, as far as I know, a very successful example of modular housing, actually, that has been put up in the downtown east side and run by Atyra Housing for the last two years at least. And certainly, to my, nothing has come to my attention about anything, difficulties modular housing has caused with the tenants there. I've seen, I've heard nothing but stability so far. I mean, is that been your experience as you guys are in staff, working directly with the operators?
Yeah, the project that you referred to has been incredibly successful, and it was particularly good because it was a very difficult site to develop. So the modular housing enabled a very unique design for a very tight, constrained site. And so it's been incredibly successful for Atyra Women's Resource Society, who are the nonprofit who manage it, and I believe it's won several awards.
Yes, that was my impression. Good, I'm glad to know that.
How many buildings?
No, it's not. It's, anyhow, I'm not going to debate a speaker. The point is, is that modular housing does bring stability, and it isn't necessarily its trailer park, and that's, that's the issue. The other issue that was consistently raised was 250 square feet. That's the minimum size. But as we've seen in the Atyra site and others, that it can actually get much larger. You can take two of those containers, shift them this way, and so you actually have flow-through rooms and very nice suites. Is that not correct? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. That the, the benefits of this type of construction is that there is that flexibility to reformat and reconfigure the units.
On the issue, just taking the speaker's comments out there for a sec, the issue of permanence has been raised, you know? So as I see it, correct me if I'm wrong, the modular housing is useful in the sense that it gives people a place to live for a number of years, it'll be up to five years in the first instance, or whenever. If we didn't have that, where would they be? And my guess is a lot of them would be on the street or really underhoused somewhere else. I mean, that's the whole point of the modular program. Is that correct?
Certainly, Councilor, the need for rental housing is great in the city. We've seen vacancy rates decline both in the city and in the region, and there are many different types of people in communities across the city that need rental housing, and that's why we are, as staff, proposing these temporary options, because we believe that they will still fulfill a need in our community.
Chief Housing Officer, I just wanted to add to that. The temporary nature is really the fact that we've got an urgent housing need at the moment, and the housing is being built to a high quality standard of build, so it meets with the Vancouver Building Bylaw. And in terms of the quality of the house and the form of development, it will be no different to a permanent structure. The temporary nature that we speak to is the temporary ability to move that structure from site to site to make best use of the land, as I mentioned earlier. But it does meet, provide the opportunity to create housing supply immediately. The modular that we apply it in at 1500 Main will be from design to construction and handover in six months, whereas when we look at our permanent housing supply, that can take us two to three years, depending on the project itself. So when we say that it's transient for the population that's living in there, it's transient whilst they wait for permanent housing that's being created. And we've got many thousands of units that are going to come through the planning supply, both through the community management contributions that we've created social housing through, as well as through the 2,500 units that the agency is looking to develop over the next five years. over the next five years. And we've got a thousand units in the planning process, which will be developed out, and people will then be flowing through these units into that more permanent supply. So, it's a stop-gap measure in order to, to allow people safe housing in the meantime.
Okay, thank you. And just my last 30 seconds. On the Atera site, although it, the speaker might, I might have misspoke, it could be permanent, however, it still is able to be moved if necessary and rebuilt, redeveloped, should Atera decide to do so.
The Atera project is, it's a, it's a permanent housing for that site, but it's a modular build. So, for sites as they come forward, the ones we're aiming for here will be temporary, and they will be put on-site specifically so that they could be moved at a later date.
Right, and the fit and finish would be no different than, say, the Atera site one?
Exactly, yeah.
Great, thank you, and thank you for the correction.
Okay, Counselor DeGenova?
Thank you. I was going to ask the question the speaker had asked regarding earthquake preparedness in modular housing. If staff could please comment on, I suppose, the, the standards that we are building to?
It complies with the Vancouver Bylaw, and its full seismic considerations are given to the foundations, which is part of the consideration that we, we provided in terms of developing these designs. So, it will be compliant with the, the seismic upgrades that are required for new housing.
Thank you. And as we move forward, looking at modular housing, could you comment on how many occupants you would see, but we're not being site-specific, but in moving forward, would we be looking at family-sized sites, single occupancy sites? Would you be able to elaborate on that? And has lock-off suites been something that has been considered in the modular, modular housing standard?
Yeah, all, all of those options are a viable opportunity to create housing in the different locations that we're looking at. We are obviously understanding the need. This, we've running the pilot at 1500 Main, and as we grow the program, we can obviously address different needs as we move forward. So, we will be looking at family housing as well as single occupancy, and as well, as we mentioned earlier, we are providing 10% of the units to be to accessible standards as well.
Okay, and by family housing, we would mean two bedrooms plus?
Yeah, two and three-bedroom units, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you very much.
Counselor Meggs?
Well, just quickly, I'm not sure who this is for, but when you're looking for sites for this purpose, how far and wide do you range? And, you know, in the examination of suitable sites, how many has the city got? How many are reviewed? There was this concern raised about them all being in one neighborhood. Just an idea of the scope of the search for sites and what the city's got on hand?
Randy Pekarski, Planning Department. So, in the search that we did for this particular round, we took a look at all of the RM zone sites in the city, and we looked at all of this, all of the city-owned CD1 sites and city-owned RM sites. So, so that was, that was our scope. What we found was that within the, within the RM district, there was very, very few sites that had enough vacant space located on them, so we're looking for a 10,000-square-foot footprint, and it had to be accessible from, from, from the road to provide access. And we found very, very, very few sites that were, that were that sized in the existing RM district, and none that were city-owned that had that. We then, we then turned our attention to all of the city, city-owned sites, and focused on the CD1 sites, because they were quicker to implement in terms of a zoning change. As we took a look at that, we, we came across literally, I think, about 150 sites, something of that, of that order, that were, were in that category. And what we found is going through, again, selection process of trying to find sites that had enough open space and an ability to, you know, insert the modular housing, it was narrowed down to something like about a dozen. As we then further, further take a look at the constraints on the site, it got, then went down to those four sites where, where we had opportunities from a site-development point of view, that we felt we could, we, they, they, these were possible sites for the, for the modular housing.
All right, thanks. So, the other question I had was, we had a slide up in Ms. Moblis' presentation. Is that the typical size, particularly height, that you anticipate would, would be used for this kind of thing? Because there's concerns about neighborhood impact, and I'm not talking about these sites, but we had the reference to towers and so forth. My assumption is that we're, we're looking at under six stories, but correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's, that's correct. In fact, the general regulations identify that they will be no longer, no greater than 35 feet in, is that, is that correct? Yeah, I think, 35 feet in height, and there, there have a maximum of density that we would, we'd allow, and it would typically be less than that. So, there's maximum parameters for...
This doesn't open the door to anything more than a three-story building that has multiple units. It's not a Trojan horse for so much larger development or anything of that sort.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Stevenson?
Thanks very much. As to the well-being of, the concerns about the well-being of the people who will be living there, to begin with, I think one is concern about their well-being just to get them there. Their well-being, obviously, is in danger on the street, or without a home, or surf couching, or whatever. But once they're there, I'm, as I indicated, I have no doubt that staff have been and will continue to look in and do the research to make sure that people who live there have the best possible surroundings for their emotional, mental health, well-being. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct. Thank you so much. And again, the design guidelines really do identify ways to maximize livability for each of those units. And again, being social housing operated by a nonprofit to provide supports and create community within the building, and hopefully integrate the community, or integrate the building successfully into the community.
I've known you all for so long, I know how professional you are in these issues, long before coming to this open hearing. There is a concern, and I do understand this concern, that it seems that these are being placed exclusively on the east side. And so, the question is, arises, well, why not the, why not the west side? What's happening over there? And I realize that these are spots that are chosen because they're available and they're temporarily available, and after a time when development comes, then they'll need to move to other spots. But could you talk about the choice that you've been looking at and the possibility of the west side?
Again, Randy Pekarski. In, in our search, we, we looked at any available site, as I, as I, as I mentioned, the RM districts exist across all parts of the city, north, south, east, and west, and, and as do city-owned properties. The, the facts were simply that, as we went through the search for sites that had the available footprint and had the characteristics that we were looking for in terms of access to the, access to the streets and so on, that was, this was just, the, the, the numbers it came down to, these were the available sites that we determined could be put forward for, for redevelopment at this time. There are other sites that are slightly more complicated from a, from a redevelopment and/or a zoning point of view, that as we now have the regulations, or if Council approved the recommendations, we now have the regulations and the guidelines. We think it'll open up more sites, both city and, and private, but they may be a slightly different process to get there. This, this was, in this round, trying to find, frankly, low-hanging fruit that we thought we could get through relatively quickly, and, and perhaps that was in our, in our ambition, where we tripped up on some of the public process and, and the communication. So, that's, in our, our view, that there's, this, the regulations will enable us to take a look at this in a, in a more rational way and in, in a more site-specific way. And so, it will also give us the opportunity to come back with solutions that will be individual and broader across the city.
Well, I, I'm glad to hear that, because I, I do think it's only fair that all of the city be involved in not this, and not just one specific area. And obviously, this will be part of the consultations that you have when you go out with the communities and talk to them about their site versus, versus other. And again, obviously, the number of people who've come to say thank you for withdrawing this indicates how strongly people feel. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Stevenson. And I think that's all for questions. Counselor Jiang, do you want to?
Sure.
Ready to move to next steps?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I think back to the year 2009, when we first started talking about modular housing. We had a design charade out here, we invited all sorts of folks, we had everything from trailers used in construction to steel containers from container ships. We had, you know, those types, and people said, oh, it was horrifying, it looked like a trailer park, straight through to, wow, each room is a module, and you can plug them together like Lego. And I made the mistake of, of mentioning Britco, and they were very upset with me, because they said, you know, we do more than construction trailers, you know, Counselor Jiang. The PNE Prize Home is a prime example of a modular home. So, I went out to see it, and I went, holy cow, and I paid the 50 bucks to try to win that thing, and it was, you know, a modular home. So, it's come a long way. It's come a very long way, and I know our staff, you know, it's been, what, how many years, a long, long time now, have been working on this, because it is very innovative and new. And the Atera project was one of the very first ones to actually get started, and so far, as we've heard, has been very, very successful. It can be a permanent structure, it can be a temporary structure. What we're talking about today are certainly temporary structures right now, in order to ease some housing problems that we have. Of course, people want a permanent building, people want a permanent home, absolutely. But while they're waiting for it, they need to live somewhere, and as we've seen in our city, I don't want them living in a dingy basement or underhoused in an SRO, and, and that's what often happens. People get the worst accommodations while they're waiting, or they get moved out of the neighborhood. You know, I'm a member of our neighborhood in the area, you guys have known me for many, many years, and we've always been welcoming, trying to find solutions for people from all different backgrounds. And I'm, I, you know, and I'm also very pleased that all my, all the friends and neighbors are here today to voice their concerns and issues, and, you know, getting us, getting, you know, making sure that we get it right. And so, thank you for all your hard work and letters and calls, and which we couldn't answer because we're in a public hearing, so if I didn't answer you, that's why. But it was, it's very heartening to see such an engaged community, and one that's working to make it right, to welcome more people to our neighborhood in a way that we can all thrive, and I think that's very important. So, with that, I want to thank everybody, in particular, the speakers and our staff for being so sensitive and responsive, and happy to move the recommendation in the yellow memo, which looks at the basic guidelines, at the same times takes out those four sites for now, until they can actually do a lot more work with our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Jiang. And Counselor Reimer, you're on the queue, are you willing to second that motion? Okay, and you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson. So, I wanted to thank the community for coming out tonight. It may have felt like a busy time of year, giving up a night that wasn't needed at the last second, but I, I know for myself, it's really helped kind of shave down a lot of the issues around modular housing, and help clarify what the next steps on this could look like. I also wanted to thank staff for two things. One is for bringing the definition forward, because I, as Counselor Jiang said, it's been eight years now that we've been talking about the possibility of modular housing. But also to thank you for withdrawing the site-specific, as the counselor who championed the Copley Orchard originally, it was, it was pretty challenging to see the proposal, and I know how hard you guys have worked to build a, a very viable orchard there. I know it wasn't that welcome in the community when it first came, but it's become a very key cornerstone of the community. I unfortunately was recently ran evicted, so I'm not a member of the community anymore, but I do, I'm very keenly aware of the renter issues in that neighborhood. And it, it does bring me to this question of mental health and housing, which one of the speakers spoke to. The worst we know, and staff have documented this very well, as have academics, at UBC we have some world-leading experts on the subject, the worst impact on mental health is being homeless. So, anything that we can do to ensure that people have access to housing, and we know that temporary housing is an important bridge for people who are dealing with mental health or other issues. I personally lived in a 225-square-foot basement, dingy, moldy basement suite, not as a single, but actually with a husband and a child for three years, because that's what we could find, and that's what we could afford in the city of Vancouver. My child, when they outgrew the closet, we had to figure out a way to, to find new housing. I know you're looking at me with stunned looks, but, but that is the reality for renters in the city of Vancouver. So, I think that when we're sort of putting up the concept of someone living in a brand-new 250-square-foot modular housing against the reality of that basement, or worse, out on the streets, I, I think the temporary housing becomes an option that we need to have as we continue to engage senior levels of government into funding housing that they rightfully should be funding in the city of Vancouver. On the, the next steps, I think, in retrospect, getting the definition nailed down in the regulations and then going out to community, I think it would have been very challenging to have a, a meaningful dialogue with the community about what we were proposing before this step, so now that becomes obvious. I do think the onus now on the city for consultation on this is much higher. I, I heard a number of inaccurate pieces of information about city plans and planning, and I think we've created an environment, as a result of taking this out, where that becomes possible, that people can hypothesize about, you know, upzone all of Trail Lake or something like that, when that doesn't exist anywhere. But I, I think we have to be quite robust in this consultation. Renters, the province does not give us the tools to contact renters, they won't give us a list of the leases or where even rental housing is. So, we only have a direct line to property owners through the property tax rule, but I would love to work with the community to make sure that we are reaching out to all, I mean, I personally know some of the renters, I know you guys, some of you are renters and know other renters, so let's figure out how we can work together and make sure that, at least in that neighborhood, the renters are, and we can build a model for how we engage deeply into the neighborhoods where renters do form a majority of residents.
The people who live there, buy life insurance or buy insurance, maybe they're going to get...
Sorry, sir, we're, we're in the middle of a council debate right now. Okay, thank you for your respect, and Counselor, Counselor Carr is next.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I just, too, want to echo my fellow counselors' thanks and gratitude to everyone who came out tonight, and to everybody who wrote into us, your input and the statements you've made and concerns you've raised really do help inform council and the decisions that we make. So, thank you for that, and thank you for the responses of staff to those questions that were raised as a consequence of the input of the public. I think I heard some things very loud and clear, and I, I'm, I know our staff heard those too. I mean, one is that we are in a crisis around housing in this city, but it's important to think about how we respond to that crisis and the movements we, we make to supply housing in a way that doesn't compromise the things that we also hold dear, and green space and gardens are obviously one of those, are two of those things. So, I think it's important, as we're choosing sites moving forward, to think, to think about that. I, I also think the comments that were made and raised by the, by the citizens who came, residents who came, around the form of public consultation were incredibly valuable, and I was happy to hear our staff respond around the process moving forward, the desire to reach out to renters, the desire to make sure our communications are in multiple languages, that, that these are important moves. And the desire for genuine consultation, I think, is a, an incredibly important point that should always be made and emphasized in all of this. This is real genuine consultation, what's going on, where, where ideas are raised and, and our input back to staff with their responses back to you. I think also, we need to know that, that modular housing is not permanent housing, and that it should, we should not be under any delusion that it is. But it is housing that responds to a need in a crisis situation, and, and does so in a way that through these, the definition and these guidelines, I think, is, is a very healthy and sound approach. I was very happy to read through all the changes in terms of the zoning guidelines, so the very specific changes that focused on livability, everything from very specific requirements around windows, and access to air and to light, to common, and high-quality communal space, and open outdoor space. I think these things can always mitigate some of the issues around size, which is really largely driven by affordability. And I think in the end, we have to make sure that these units are affordable. I was very happy to hear staff say that there's every effort to deepen the level of affordability in specific projects as we move forward, because that really is the... in specific projects as we move forward because that really is the crunch in the city. It's one reason why we have so many people who are street homeless as well. So for the, those reasons mentioned, I'm very happy to be supporting the recommendations in this report.
Thank you. Councillor De Genova?
First of all, I'd like to thank our staff. I understand that many people here came to speak to specific sites, but thank you for your explanation as to why that would not happen. And in fact, I'm pleased to see that that may actually see us have consultation specific to sites. So I'm quite happy about that. That being said, I do thank everyone for coming out and I, I have a lot of empathy if you felt that you were going to speak to a site tonight. That does not mean the site necessarily won't be coming back to us, so stay tuned. But that being said, I, I have, I have been pushing for affordable housing. And I use the term affordable loosely because what is affordable? Is housing still affordable in the city of Vancouver? Let's talk about the most affordable it can be. And I feel that we need to look at different forms of housing. We don't need to just look at one type, one form of housing. We're going to build all rental 100 or we're going to build all one form of housing. We need a different, we need a different approach here. And as I've moved forward on the city council, being that this is my first term, I introduced affordable homeownership and I was happy to see that unanimously supported. I know that micro suites have been allowed in some areas of the city, however, they're very specific. And I'm hoping that with modular housing, as councillor Carr stated, I mean, it's a more affordable way of moving forward. That doesn't necessarily mean that it is like the annexes in the schools that we saw before. I, I think that there's a way to have thoughtful, thoughtful consultation around what modular housing is and take away the stigma that people may feel. I had someone call me up and say, what's, what's going on, you know, months ago? They thought that the city was building trailer parks. And I said, they're not trailer parks. I think the idea that was introduced was modular housing. It's very different than that. But that being said, now that we see this come to fruition, I'm hoping that we'll be able to move forward with affordability and it won't necessarily just be single-room occupancy units. We'll be looking at family housing, lock-off suites. We'll be looking at areas of communal, you know, where, where people can have community, whether that's recreation or maybe even communal kitchens, gardens. So I'm, I'm very happy to support this moving forward and I'm hoping that we'll actually see, you know, councillor Reimer was talking about living in a space that's 250 square feet and that was a reality. Some people like to live in a smaller space. In fact, I've had the opportunity to tour small micro suites and I find them better planned out than 700 square foot apartments. So I think that if we have thoughtful consultation around specific projects, we hopefully will be able to attain a standard that is not only a best practice for us here in Vancouver, but will be a world-class best standard. And I thank our staff for that and in supporting affordable or most affordable housing here in Vancouver. I'd like to see that as well as I'd like to see, and I hope council will support eventually, you know, inboard bedrooms, borrowed light bedrooms. And we'll be moving forward on this train of most affordable housing that I think that we've missed out on for the past eight years. Thank you very much.
Councillor Deal is next.
Thank you. I won't add much to what's been said. I just want to say that again, I appreciate people coming out and letting us know of your concerns. I think it really also, your questions and concerns will inform the next steps going forward as staff do more outreach. And I appreciate the comment that the, the letter that was sent out is not considered consultation. I hear that. I just want to add a few other thoughts to this. I know that case studies are not, anecdote is not data, but I have someone I worked with in a past career who, a peer who went through tough times and ended up living in her car. And recently, a few months ago, when we had a hearing here, she had disappeared and she, we found her and she got into temporary housing. And she was in one of our city temporary housing places for several months and it allowed her to stabilize. And there was nothing chaotic about her behavior. She just personally wasn't able to cope. She was not a concern for anybody. And that temporary housing gave her the stability that she needed to get into one of our permanent housing units now. And, and she is on her way to back to being a full participant in society. And so there is a really seriously positive thing about getting somebody even into temporary housing. I also think that these modular units are really interesting and creative. I love the idea of different types of, of housing, whether it's, whether it's people who've figured out the tiny homes thing, which is, which is of course a very big movement right now. And people have asked, actually approached us about doing tiny homes here, but it turns out that hooking them up becomes an issue. So this way with the modular ones, you hook up a bunch of them together and they become affordable housing. I think it's extremely creative and I think the design guidelines are an excellent way to make them very livable as well. So I actually look forward to these being throughout the city. I live in Kits and I'd love to see one and somewhere near me. I think it'd be really neat addition to the neighborhood. And anytime somebody finds themselves off the street or out of shelters and into a place that they can shut the door and have it be their own is a huge step forward in people's lives and can often lead to them re-entering society, connecting back up with family, getting themselves healthy and, and really becoming healthy human beings again, who can enjoy their lives and add to their community, as I think these units will for many people. So thank you. I do support this.
Okay, councillor Stevenson?
Thanks very much. And I'll just add a couple of words first to thank the staff for withdrawing these, realizing that indeed a lot more consultation, as has become obvious, was needed. And thanks to all the people who came out to reiterate that. Also, I want to thank the staff because I think if it hadn't been for this, plus the rest of the agenda that we have tonight, we'd be going non-stop till Christmas listening to all the speakers and counter. But however, now that it has been withdrawn, the public have a huge opportunity because there will be fulsome discussion and all of the issues that have been raised will be, will be of course reiterated at those public gatherings. And I know that staff has heard this loud and clear. I also heard some fear tonight, probably about, well, who are the folks that are going to move into our neighborhood? And that was best exemplified, I think, with one of the earlier speakers who said that he was concerned that he was going to have to have razor wire around his place. And I think those are exactly the type of questions as well and fears that the staff will encounter and will need to thoroughly discuss with, with, with the public. I was reminded just a moment ago, when councillor Jang and I were talking about some of this here, that many of the concerns are much like the laneway housing issues that we heard some time ago. When we first proposed laneway housing, many of exactly these same concerns came up. And now that's a very, very popular program and people are building laneway houses all over the city and not just the west side, but the east side and so on. So, and I think the east side, west side question, which I asked staff about, is really a legitimate question and, and I know that that is going to be addressed. But overall, it needs to be remembered that the reason that we're doing this is we have a huge housing crisis in this city. It is really a, a very, very large problem. We have less than 0.5% rental vacancy in Vancouver. And we have to do something. We have to both build rental housing and we have to find whatever kinds of housing that we can. And this is one of the tools that we're looking at. And I think myself will be successful, but I obviously realize there's a lot of kinks to be dealt before we get to that point. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll be voting in favor of this particular process so far.
Okay. Thank you councillor Stevenson. That's all for council speaking to this. I'll be adding my support as well for these points and looking forward to the next steps. Thanks to everyone for, for being here tonight, taking time out of your busy lives to weigh in at a key time because no doubt with the pressures that we face, we're going to have, we're coming back to figure out those next steps in the new year. So we'll look forward to that process being robust. And we are ready for the question. We'll go to the voting screens, council, on the recommendations moved by councillor Okay, we have 10 votes, all in favor. Unanimous support for the recommendations has moved. And again, a thanks to all of you who've come to speak tonight and stay tuned. We'll look forward to next steps from staff in the new year. And we, that means we're on to item number three with still lots of, lots of work to do tonight. Madam Clerk, this is the heritage designation 315 West 11th Avenue, the Dorfler House. We have no speakers on three and four, so these may go quickly. I'll ask the clerk for the, to read the application and the summary of correspondence received, please.
This is an application by Wendy Andrews Architects to add the Dorfler House at 315 West 11th Avenue to the Vancouver Heritage Register in the B evaluation category and to designate the exterior of the heritage building as protected heritage property. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received since this application was scheduled for public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And James Bolt is here, our heritage planner from Urban Design Division to present the application. Okay, prepared to, we'll, we'll waive the presentation given we have no registered speakers. So we can just go to questions on that front, but I'll ask if the applicant is here and wishes to speak to the application. Available for questions? Okay. Council, any questions for the applicant or Mr. Bolt and the staff team on item number three? Seeing none, we'll see if there are any speakers here for item number three. I'll call three times. So are there any speakers here for item number three? Are there any speakers here for item number three? Last call, speakers for item number three? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the speakers list and as we've had no comments since 5:00 PM written, we will close public comment period. Any final questions or statement from staff or the applicants? No closing comments. Any questions for council? Councillor Deal will move the recommendation. Councillor Carr will second that. Any debate from council? Okay, we'll go right to the voting screen on this one. And everyone would place their vote. Okay, we have eight councillors present. All eight are in favor of the recommendations, the motion. So we have concluded on item number three. Thanks to the applicants for bringing that forward and staff for the good work. Congratulations. We are on to item number four. And item number four is the text rezoning for 1001 Denman to 1015 Denman Street. Madam Clerk, can you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by Bell Group to amend the text of CD1 427 for 1001 to 1015 Denman Street to remove conditions of use regarding street-level uses to be consistent with the surrounding C5 Commercial District along Denman Street. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received in this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you. And we have Erin Lau here. This is our planning assistant for downtown division to present the application. We have no speakers registered on this one either, so I will suggest we'll waive.
I'm willing to waive my presentation.
Okay, thank you. So I'll ask if the applicant Dale Belaventz of the Bell Group is here and wishes to speak?
I have to hear the question.
Okay, so we'll go right to questions if council has any for staff, for Mr. Lau or Mr. Belaventz. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go right to hearing from any speakers who are here on item number four. Are there any speakers here for item number four, the rezoning on Denman Street? Are there any speakers here for item number four? Final call, item number four, any speakers here? Seeing none, we will close the speakers list and we'll close public comments and move right to any closing comments from staff? Anything, Mr. Lau? No? Anything from the applicants, closing comments?
No.
Okay, any questions from council at close? No questions and councillor Deal will move. Councillor Deal and councillor Jang will second the recommendations. Any debate from council on that? We're ready to go to the vote on this item number four. Everyone could place your votes. Okay, eight votes are in, all in favor, unanimous support for the motion. And we have approved that rezoning on Denman Street. Thank you to the applicants and staff for the good work. And that is item number four. We're on to item number five, which is a text amendment for 1030 Denman Street. And madam clerk, can you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by DA, architects and planners to amend CD1 537 Comprehensive Development District for 1030 Denman Street to change the limitation on hotel use, allowing for the conversion of levels two and three of the existing building to a 68-room boutique hotel. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, council has received three pieces of correspondence in support of the application and four pieces of correspondence opposed to the application. This represents all correspondence received on this application up to 4:00 PM today.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. And we have, from our downtown planning division, Jonathan Danny Jacob is here to present the application. We have a couple of speakers, but I might suggest, given the number of speakers we still have on the agenda, that we, we just have questions for you, if there are any. A quick presentation? Well, we have dozens, I think, speakers waiting to hear and it's after 8 o'clock. So if you have specific questions, councillor Stevenson, we'll have, maybe we'll offer the applicants an opportunity to speak. Any opening comments from the applicant team?
We were willing to leave our, we're here for.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we go right to a first round of questions, if there are any for staff or the applicants? From council, any takers? Okay, no questions at this stage, so we'll go right to the speakers list. We have four people registered to speak. Thanks, Mr. Danny Jacob. So we'll go to speaker number one, who is Brent Lawrence. Brent Lawrence here? Okay. Followed by Gemma Lloyd.
Honorable mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Brent Lawrence and for the past seven years, I have owned and operated Uncut Hair Salon in the Denman Place Mall. Thank you for the opportunity to present my questions and concerns and that the tenants and I have experienced since the change of ownership of the Denman Place Mall Coast Plaza Hotel. On Friday, December the night, I emailed some concerns to the council as requested in the report after the last hearing in July. Now, in the report, one of the items from the public meeting was the question refurbishing the Denman Place Mall ground floor in conjunction with the rezoning and planned construction. At the, at the present time, we are, we already have issues with air conditioning. Temperatures were, were in the high 80s during the warmer weather and while the colder weather, employees in the newly renovated Hong Kong Bank are working with, with their winter coats on.
Mr. Lawrence, if you could just move off the mic a little bit? It's just a little distorted when you're too close to it.
Sorry.
Picks you up just. Picks you up, just standing perfect.
As we have no control over the issues, many businesses have had to close for half or four days, resulting in loss of revenue. The second issue is that of security. Prior to the current ownership at the Denman Place Mall, the Denman Place Mall had benefited from security present for 30 years. When its removal was threatened, the mall business owners and the self-employed merchants of the mall signed a petition for the security to remain. Sadly, this was not heard, and there's no security present in the mall for six years. As a result, we have been bombarded with homeless, drug use, and other related activities in the mall washroom and on the second floor. Violence, litter, drug paraphernalia has escalated in the mall and is very discouraging to regular and potential new customers. While all these problems are real for real people, the abrupt change of the Denman Mall in this way has meant it no longer serves the West End's population in an active vibrant neighborhood meeting place, which is supported by all of us tenants. I have lived in the, in the West End for almost 30 years and have been a proud civic-minded member of the local community, building my business and supporting other small business colleagues, colleagues. There is a wonderful seniors' community to who, to who move between the West End seniors' network and the business, and the businesses in the mall. My salon is a popular drop-in place for those seniors and others who are dealing with difficulties, which I believe is of great benefit to them and also very rewarding for me. The rapid-on-check changes due to lack of security have meant that many of our patrons stay away, and those who are in the mall are often concerned about their safety. Tenants are worried about, tenants, tenants are worried about raising concerns as it is, as it, as this may affect their relationship with, and leases with landlord. With the rezoning and the construction, would these, would issue, would these issues and those previous email issues be resolved by the landlord? Where do I go with the concerns if our, if our issues continue to be ignored? I am seriously concerned about my business and the future of the livelihood due to the way I have been treated by the current property owners. Thank you, thank you so much for speaking. These are just concerns that I have, like, it's, it's been a pretty long battle with these guys, and it's hard to do work when, when you ask them to do anything, and they really don't do anything. They won't fix anything. Like, it's, it's, it's really hard, anyway. So I just, I wanted to put that through, and we're very concerned of how things are going to happen, like, if we run into issues, like everything else in the past has been, you know, not taken care of. So, you know, we're just scared, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. You've got questions from councillor Stevenson first?
Thanks very much for coming in to discuss these things.
Pull your mic down, councillor Stevenson.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is that better? Have you sat with these landlords, either yourself or a group?
Yeah, yeah, I've sat and asked them, you know, you know, we tried to, you know, I brought in an engineer, I had to bring in my own engineer to work with, to ask if I could, you know, work with their engineer to come up with something to fix the problem with me, anyway. But he doesn't talk to me. They, they walk past me in the mall, they don't even acknowledge me. And, and as far as they're concerned, I'm trouble. Like, if there's a problem within the place, if you, if you view there's a problem, you're trouble. They don't, they don't even acknowledge anything, so.
Do most of the tenants in the mall feel the same way as you? And do you get together to talk about this?
Yeah, a lot of, not so much the, quite a few of the tenants, yes, but the owners, they really don't want to get involved because of their leases. And like, I'm right next door to Hettie Fry's, you know, she doesn't want to get involved. Next door, the doctor doesn't want to get involved, but all the staff, you know, all the staff are, they can't do anything.
Why would you think that Hettie Fry would not want to get involved? I mean, she has some clout.
She just, she's only got four years left in her, in her, you know, with, with her lease, I guess. She just doesn't want to stir, it's, it's very hard to get anyone to, to, to talk and to do anything there. It's just, it's, it's like I'm in a place where no, like, I can't get an answer from no one, like.
So are you concerned about even talking in now, tonight?
Yeah, I'm concerned talking.
What would be the repercussions?
Well, I'm, I've only got a short lease left with, with, with the sedews here, so, you know, I think at the end of it, I don't know what, what their plans are. I, I just don't know.
But you might not be staying anyway, you mean?
I might not be staying anyways, because it's up when all this construction goes on. But I think, I didn't know prior, but I think they knew prior to what was going on. So that's how, they wouldn't, he wouldn't give me an extension on the lease. I asked for it. And he said, "You need an extension on your lease." And then he says, "Oh, you need an extension on your lease? We're not going to give it to you." Yeah.
So what, what are you hoping by speaking with us, we might do?
Well, I'm just speaking for the rest of the, the tenants and, and the.
Well, you're speaking really for yourself, though, aren't you?
Yeah, for me, and there's other tenants in there that, that are concerned, too, of how it's going to happen, like, if, if the water gets shut down, or, you know, like, they were, they were doing the floors above me for a week, and I had to shut down, so nobody, okay, this is it. You know, like, couldn't, none of my, my, I couldn't speak to any of the clients. It was so loud in there, but nobody, nobody cares about it.
What about that new huge wine shop? They seem to be thriving. Are they, do they have the same kind of problems?
The new wine shop, no, not so much. No, no, everything is, everything is fine in there.
And do you know whether the, the grocery store there has problems with them?
Yeah, their, their heating and air conditioning, it doesn't work properly either. You know, throughout the whole mall, it's hot spots, it's cold spots.
So this security thing, do you sit and talk to other tenants about this? I mean, about the security issue? I mean, that sounds pretty bad for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty bad. You don't know what you're going to run into on a day-to-day basis. You know, there's a lot of mental illness, there's seniors, there's only one washroom in the place, there's, in the male washroom downstairs, and they're in there doing drugs. So the seniors, you know, they can't even get in to use the washroom, you know, and, you know, they're going in the hallways, it's, it's just, it's very chaotic.
So the, the grocery store, again, they have a lot of clout because they've got a lot of space. Do they want to talk about these issues like security? I would think they'd be quite concerned about security, wouldn't they?
Yeah, they have their own, their own security in there, in the mall, but I think they're on it right now. I've spoken to the owner, and he's not, he's quite upset by what's happening, you know, in the mall on a day-to-day basis. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty rough.
Sounds like you need a union there or something.
Yeah, they need some.
Union of other shop owners. Thanks very much.
It's just, you know, it's, it's just the lack of, you know, since they come in, they've taken away all the, you know, the, the amenities there and, and security, so it's, it's just, it's really chaos. And if you say anything, that's it.
How's your rent compare to, say, on Denman Street?
The rent is actually fairly good. They, what they've done is they've, they've cut the, they've cut them, the bigger units up into half, so then, you know, it's quite affordable, but you're working in a smaller space. Denman Street is, is.
Very high.
Very high, yeah.
And that's your time, councillor Stevenson.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Louis, questions?
Yes, sorry, sir. Just a couple, over here. Just a couple of questions in regards to the development itself. You, you're okay with it, with the activities that they've proposed, except you want to ensure that your businesses, your business and your neighbors, because you're, you're speaking on their behalf to a degree, are, aren't negatively impacted as part of this conversion construction? Is that, would that be an accurate summation?
Yeah, yeah, like, when all, everything starts, like, like, all our cries for help is, like, nothing happens.
And so, so based on your experience, you're not sure that despite this current situation, you're concerned that going forward, it'll just get worse and then your businesses get impacted?
Yeah.
Is that right?
They just do what they want. It's just like, there's no respect for any of the, me especially, I've been so disrespected by the whole lot of it, you know? And I, I provided a good business, you know, and good community, you know, the people like me there, you know? And I've lived in that area for 30 years, and I would like to live in this area, so, but they've made it very difficult.
Okay, thank you. I'll address some of this concern of yours with staff when the time comes. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Carr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Oh, hello.
You have more questions?
Oh, sorry. Not a problem. Thanks so much for coming. I really appreciate that, and it's really important to come and speak to concerns that, you know, you might be nervous about speaking about, but I really appreciate it. I think all of council does. So my first question, oh, first, it's just to reassure you that, like councillor Louis, I intend to bring up some of these questions with staff, because I'm not sure how staff or city, our city can help in that particular circumstance, but there are perhaps ways, especially if there's inadequacy around water or heat or air conditioning, those kinds of issues which have to do with, with some, to some degree, safety, but also the quality of, of the building. My question is really around how you feel about the changes. There was a redevelopment proposal, it's changed now, that's why we're reconsidering it. And so Denman Fitness is moving, it's, the lease is expiring, and now they're, you know, there's the fitness across the street, right? And instead of that, in the restaurants, there's going to be a boutique hotel. How do you feel about that?
I, I'm, you know, I'm for it, you know, I'm excited about it. It's just, you know, it's, there's going to be this really nice boutique hotel, but then down below, it's us, and then up above, it's going to be residential.
Right.
I, I think it'd be good for the mall.
Okay.
But it's just how, how it's going to be done, you know? Like, all of, like, my water is in the hotel, you know, comes from the hotel and stuff like that, like, when all this stuff is going to be shut down, you know, it's going to affect business and stuff like that. And, you know, even though, they're not communicating, you know, how it's, I, I think it's, it's going to be positive for the neighborhood.
In the end, yeah, this is my mall, this is the one I.
Sorry?
I just, I just live a block away, so I'm there all the time. I'm perfectly familiar with the circumstances, but I understand your concerns then are during the construction phase. That is another question that we can definitely pose to staff in terms of the requirements during, and the process, if there are problems during the construction phase. I'm quite happy to bring those up as well, because obviously you need your water and you need access to all the utilities.
Yeah, thanks.
Great, okay, that's great, thank you.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thank you for being here tonight. And Gemma Lloyd is our next speaker, followed by Juan Soto.
Hello, thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Gemma Lloyd, and I'm a resident of the West End. I too, just live a few blocks away from Denman Place Mall. I heartily support the development with a new hotel, and I think it's going to be so great and such a good fit for the West End community, for the restaurants and businesses in the area. I love Denman Place Mall, I've shopped there for years, it's my big attraction for moving to the West End. And I'm very happy with the new, with the new ideas that are coming forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And our next speaker is Juan Soto.
Good night. My name is Juan Manuel Soto. I am, I live in the West End, and I have my own business there in Denman Place Mall. I think the hotel is a very good idea for, I really support this business, like, the, because it's good for my business. And I am as well in the mall, and, and I don't have nothing to say about the mall, because the mall is, I have my air conditioner, sorry for my English, but, and then I don't have nothing to say about the mall. And I really, I think the hotel is very good for my, for the tourists and people coming and help my business as well. I don't know. And that's all. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question from councillor Reimer. Mr. Soto?
Very brief question. Could you tell us what your business is?
My business is very good there. And then I almost, I am there six years.
Okay. And what kind of business is it?
I have a jewelry store and clothing.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. And our final registered speaker is Catherine Bertetik.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Catherine Bertetik. I've been living in the West End for approximately 12 years. I am in support of this project. I live in a very small apartment, and having a boutique hotel when we're losing other hotels in the community is excellent, because when I can't have people stay at my house, I send them to a hotel in the neighborhood. So this is great. I'm also very excited to have another additional 300 units coming into the West End that are rental. It's hard to buy homes, so having more units available is an excellent idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here to speak. I'll just call three times. Are there any more speakers here for item number five? Any more speakers here for item number five? Last call, any last, final speakers for item number five? Seeing none, we will close the speakers list. And as we've had little or no correspondence since 5:00 PM, we'll close public comment period and move to any closing comments from staff, first of all?
No further comments.
Okay, any final comments from the applicants?
Thank you, my name is Laurie Schmidt with Schmidt and Associates Development Planning, working with the sedews. I just wanted to address some of the concerns from the first speaker. Understanding their concerns, hearing their concerns, the property owners, the architects, and the contractor associated with the construction will ensure that proper information is given to, to all the tenants in advance, along with any, any plans that, you know, for, like, I, I don't think water shutdown will be an issue, but if it is, they'll be done after hours. Proper coordination will be conducted well in advance of, of any construction occurring. Also, there has been a new security company hired for the mall. I was just informed as well, to answer that concern as well. But just to be clear, the owner is more than willing to, to, to work with all of the tenants and, and coordinate any upcoming construction events. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So questions for staff and the applicants? Councillor Carr first?
Yes, thanks very much. Well, first of all, let me very much appreciate Mr. Schmidt for, for actually coming to the mic and responding to some of those questions. That's great. So in follow-up to issues raised by, by particularly the first speaker, I'm going to start, not with this proposal, but just in general, if there is a tenant in a, in a, in a mall, and there are concerns around some things like heat or air conditioning, or. and there are concerns or ransom things like heat or air conditioning, which obviously are quality of, of life issues, who do they go to in the city?
Michael Naylor, Senior Planner for Downtown. I would think that it would be an inspection item. If, if there's, if there was no permit activity going on with the building, then you, a person could start with inspection because if, if the systems in the building aren't, aren't functioning properly, that's all it can suggest. I actually don't know very much about that.
Okay.
Now, this particular building is in the midst of a development permit application, which is quite a large and complicated application that will see the conversion of the tower to residential from hotel. And if council approves the amendment tonight, then to see the second and third levels converted into this boutique hotel.
Yes.
So the project facilitator for that application is Wendy LaBretton. So she could be contacted now by the tenants and what we can do through permits, first the development permit and then the building permit as well, is we can put conditions on, on the permit to say that the, the building tenants are, must be, give an adequate notice of water shut offs and that sort of thing. But, but people need to speak up to the city now-
Great.
And, and to the right channels.
Okay. Did you hear that? People in the audience? I mean, there's a contact Wendy LaBretton and speak up now regarding issues that might become a condition of approval in terms of making sure due notification of water shutdowns and those kinds of things. Thank you, that's very useful information. And that actually answered my second question, which is during this process, so it's not just what's now, but during the process of construction. So, appreciate that.
Okay. Council Stevenson, questions?
Thanks very much. Well, I wouldn't, my, I would, let's speak to the developer again. Thank you for coming up. I'm a little concerned, though, that all of a sudden you say there's security, suddenly on the spot. Why has there not been security when these issues have been raised and these problems have gone on now, I gather, for six years and now suddenly?
That, that I can't answer. I'd have to, yeah. Rob Sedu can answer that question.
Hi there, thank you. That's a good question, actually. We actually have a mall attendant who has been, this is a very small mall, and so we've had a mall attendant who actually cleans the mall and looks after the mall. There are, in the last little while, there have been a lot of homeless people that have been sort of made their way and, you know, it's, it's tough to, you know, ask them to leave. It really is. They're, it's wet out, it's cold, and they make their way into a warm wall. And so, that's something that we've, you know, just, I mean, what we've done is we're trying to control costs for, for our mall tenants and they pay that through their common area expenses. And one of the things that we've, we've tried to do, initially, we did have two people, we had a guard and we also had a cleaner. Because it was such a small mall, we tried to control costs and tried to make this a really affordable mall. And so, that was the idea, is we had one person that would sort of do both jobs. In the last, probably in the last six months, we've noticed, you know, quite an uptick in the number of people that have been there. And so, just recently, I don't, you probably know the Shoppers just opened up and the Loblaw's people were in town. They own the No Frills and they own Shoppers. One of the biggest sort of backlashes we've had from Loblaw's is basically saying, your common area expenses, you need to control, you need to control. And they were in town and we basically, Joe from No, No Frills, who operates the store, actually brought the Loblaw's people out and he said, look what's happening. It was perfect ti- timing there, honestly, when, you know, this is when, and they sort of showed him around and said, this is what's going on here in the neighborhood. And so, that was kind of, you know, when they pay 70% of the bill-
Yeah, it's a very long explanation, I'm-
Okay.
Helpful to, but, you know, I live a block away, so I know your mall very well.
Yes.
And so, a lot of these concerns I, I've heard before. And what I did hear from the first speaker was that you have ignored this person and he, and others are frightened to bring these issues to you because of lease and so on. Should they have concern and why, why do you think that they seem to be fearful?
I've had a really good relationship with a lot of the tenants. I mean, with, with this one particular speaker, number one, I mean, there have been some issues where we're in small claims about, you know, frivolous things in my, my mind, but this is before the courts and it's just minor items. But honestly, with all the tenants, I mean, Juan's been a tenant in the mall for, for six years and I think it's great, you know, Juan, you can ask Juan how it's like in the mall. I mean, I honestly, with these big tenants, the No Frills, Loblaw's, they don't tolerate no heat, no, you know, all this stuff. I mean, it is an older building and we have, over time, renovated certain areas of the mall. And there is, there are intentions of, you know, as areas need to be-
So will this chap be staying on in the new renovated mall with you?
In the, in the renovated mall? Like, we're, we're not doing anything in, in the mall aspect right now.
Yeah, but the, the building, I mean, itself, which will be obviously huge opportunities. Will, will he be continuing his lease?
We, we haven't negotiated the lease yet, but I believe you're saying his, his lease is coming up at the end of the year or he's got another year or so left.
Okay.
At that time, I mean, a lot of our tenants that are in the mall have been there long-term. There are a lot of the original tenants that are still-
I understand.
And so, we have no intention of trying to, you know, I mean, if, if we negotiate a lease that works out, I mean, then that's possible, but I can't, I can't tell you today.
Well, he obviously has some concerns and maybe there's a way you can sit down with him and maybe a mediator or something to work out this because he's-
We have tried. We had mediation-
I'm just going to encourage, we, we need to focus on the, the public hearing issue versus tenant issues.
Thank you for that reminder.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. We're on to Council Louis.
Yes. To staff, the woman, Wendy LaBretton, is she a city staff person?
Yes, in Development Services.
And just describe what the process is. When people contact her, how is that embedded or not embedded into the development permitting process? What, who decides, like, if there needs to be something more formally written into the development permit process?
It's probably a director of planning decision. So, Ms. LaBretton would, would take a report to a meeting with Director of Planning to make a decision and the conditions would be listed there and approved at that meeting, so.
Okay. So the number, range of issues, could be water, could be air conditioning, heat, interruption and notice that they, it may or may not be interrupted.
Yeah, it would, it would tend to be focused around any impacts associated with the construction process.
And dependent on the scope of work, directional signage-
Yep.
Redirection.
Yep. There's also a lot to do with how the streets are used around the site during the construction process and hoarding and if there's hoarding needed or anything like that, so.
Which would, depending on the hoarding and the scaffolding-
Yeah.
Access to the shop and such.
Yeah.
So would we normally add that type of language in?
Yeah, and it may occur a bit more at the building permit stage, but if this stuff is, is noted now at development permit, then it carries forward into the building permit.
So I would encourage that we do note that we need to. It is a very dense and popular, busy area of our city and if we can have that noted, that we should likely keep an eye on it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've got Council Stevenson back on the queue. Do you have a motion? Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I would like to move recommendations A and B and just speak to it briefly. This is, thank you. This is both sad news and good news. I've lived just down the block for 20 years and used the hotel facilities and had many events over the years there, both as MLA and then on City Council. And that's a very po- that's been a very popular hotel, close to the beach and so on. And they have a wonderful 35th floor, which has an excellent view and I'm going to have a party there in the middle of June before all these changes happen. So it's sad news to lose that hotel, but on the other hand, it's really good news because we do need the rental accommodation and this is greatly needed in this area. As we were speaking earlier, we have less than 1.5% rental vacancy right now and so these will be really desirable suites to, to, to rent. And so, the fact that also they're keeping a boutique hotel, I think is, is wonderful as well and there is a, a great need for that. Again, this locate, this location is so excellent. And the mall also is one that's, I was worried way back when, a few years ago, when I began to hear this and the hotel was selling and that we might lose the mall. And it's such a well-used mall, grocery store and now, as was indicated by Mr. Sahoda, that we have this expanded Shoppers and many other shops. I'm sorry about the situation with Hair Salon, I've heard about this for a couple of years and I just hope that that can be worked out and obviously, Mr. Sahoda has heard some of the concerns and, and I'm hoping that we can move forward constructively with that and deal with the, the issues that are outstanding. But I, I think this is going to be a great addition to Demon Street and to the West End and I am very much in favor of these recommendations, so pleased to move it.
Thank you. Council Stevenson, Council Louis.
Well, just echo much of what Council Stevenson has said. I do hope that this time, that the proposal moves forward, that we actually get through to construction. It's, the changes that are described, I think, are helpful for the area, refreshing of the mall and some additional space and conversion of some perhaps underutilized spaces, important, I think, for, for the area itself. So, pleased to see it before us again, to help with the, with the activities in the area, but also just to, once again, reiterate that we need it to be a, a comprehensive type development where we look carefully and watch carefully that, that the area and the businesses in particular get the opportunity to continue to, to survive and succeed in the area as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Louis, Council Carr's next.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, may, may I thank everyone who did come out to speak? I really appreciate those who took the time to do that, the response of the applicant and also our staff response and particularly to address the situation, which we want to make sure doesn't become problematic during the construction phase. So I really appreciate the information being forwarded to members of, of the public around that. It's a well-used mall, I'm, I'm there a lot because it's, it's the closest place to me for groceries and services. I think that, I, I, I think it's really important that there is a mall. I know what the rents are like on, on Denman Street, that the mall is affordable, is affordable for tenants and, and I think that that's, that keeps the small businesses alive and vibrant in a community and they, they're what make a community. And I really like the fact that there is this new change, that the fitness is, you know, moved or is moving, well, there's a new one already. And, but there's going to be a, a hotel. Like some, one of the speakers that, that spoke, I have a small condo and my family, when they come from out of town, you know, they use that, the hotel, so the conversion to the rental, which is really good, is now going to be complemented by the retention of a hotel so that people from out of town can visit and I think that's awesome. So, happy to support this.
Okay. So, no further speakers. I think we're ready for the question on this item, so we will go to our voting screens and vote on the motion moving the recommendations. And we have all 10 votes in favor, unanimous support. So thanks, thanks to those who came to speak and in the community who, who were involved in shaping this and big thanks to the applicants for bringing this forward and staff team for the good work done. And that is item number five. So, we're on to item number six. We have three items left and we do have nine registered speakers on item number six, none on item seven and right now 15 on item number eight. So I think to be fair here, to our, those who are here to speak, I think council should decide right now if we're going to hear all of the speakers on these items tonight, as we've done in the past. We may, may take some hours to get there, but at this point, I think, rather than people waiting around and potentially not being able to be, to speak later this evening, we should let people know now if we're prepared to do that. Does someone want to move a motion?
Move.
Okay. Move to hear all the speakers this evening and refer the debate and decision to the next council meeting? Is that? Is in January, January the 20? Why don't we, why don't we move to hear all the speakers tonight and leave the debate and decision at council's discretion as we, as we go? If we are able to do all of the above, but we can make a decision on referral of decision on item number six next up in particular and, but I think it's important to signal to the speakers that we're, we're going to be here to hear from everyone who's here on these items. Council Reimer, I'm sorry, I have the speakers list here. Council Reimer?
Thank you, Mayor Robertson. I, I would, I'm fine to stay for the evening to hear the speakers. I am also mindful of staff, however, and I would love if there are no speakers for item seven currently registered to bump, to vary the agenda to do that, so at least the staff on that could get home. And sorry to the rest of the staff, we'll have the other two items afterwards.
Okay. So, the motion is to hear all the speakers this evening, extend to hear speakers and to vary the agenda to hear seven, six, eight. Okay. Second for that. And Council Louis?
Yes. Just on the rest of the commentary in regards to when a decision would be made on these items, after we hear from the speakers, the, the concept of referring to this subsequent council meeting is normally, I think, general practice and in, in order, given that it's about two weeks or less, depending on the proximity to, to a council meeting. In this case, though, it is a month away and that is a significant amount of time between today and when the next council meeting would be. The next, in fact, further than that, it's more than a month, it's January 24th is next council meeting. And so, I can do the, the math correctly, it's certainly more than a month, six weeks away, almost. I'd suggest that we either use the complete tonight, if we are so inclined, or to use the night on reserve that we have on Thursday, rather than six weeks delay for these, for these items. And that's, that's my proposition. I do think, given the length of delay, it's unfair to, to both the, I think, the speakers that might be speaking to it, to have them wait that length of time and for the applicant themselves.
Okay. I think in the motion, as I interpret it, we, we will make decision on when, with each of these next three items, when we make the, do the debate and decision as we finish the speakers with each. So we have the option to refer them to tomorrow's council meeting after committee, to Thursday night, or to January 24th. And I, why don't we leave that decision until we're at the, we've heard speakers on each item? We may be able to do that with some of these. Yep. But let's leave, I think we can leave that to that point at which we've heard from speakers. Council DeGenova?
Well, I-
The motion?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, that I think, especially since we're changing the order of things, the fact that speakers would have to stay very late and I appreciate that every, every speaker who's here may have different commitments for their time. I mean, I've always thought that it would be nice to be able to let speakers know how late we're going to go. Sometimes we decide to finish the speakers list. We've heard from speakers before who've said they went home because they didn't think they would, imagine that we would do that. That being said, I know some of our staff have been here since very early this morning as well and I tend to agree with some of the comments, that I think that voting January on something that we hear now, I, I wouldn't really favor that. I would favor probably splitting in two, to tonight and Thursday. would favor probably splitting in two, to tonight and Thursday, or alternatively, if we could get through the speakers tonight at a reasonable hour, then I may be having the decision tomorrow during council, when we reconvene in council. So that would be my wish, just to respect the time of the people who are here, who may have to get home, and really babysitters, or have work tomorrow themselves. Thank you.
Okay. So we are clear on the question, the motion, to hear all speakers tonight, and we'll determine when we make the decision on each item, after we've done that on each item. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? And that carries? Okay, so we're going to hear from everyone who's here tonight. It may take us a little while, but thank you for your patience and tenacity. And we are going to move on. First, item number seven, which has no registered speakers, but a bunch of staff and applicants here for it, so I will skip to that next. That's the rezoning for 151 to 157 West 41st Avenue. Madam Clerk, can you read the application and summary of correspondence received, please?
This is an application by DYS Architecture, Inc. to rezone 151 to 157 West 41st Avenue from RS1 Family Dwelling District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of two townhouse buildings at three or four and four stories containing 15 dwelling units. A height of 14.3 meters, or 47 feet, and a floor space ratio 1.86 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing council has received one piece of correspondence in support of the application, one piece of correspondence opposed to the application, and one piece of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received on this application up to 4:00 p.m. today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And Graham Winterbottom is here, planner from Vancouver South Division to present application.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Happy to waive the presentation, given there's no speakers.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll waive the presentation and go to questions, but I'll give the applicants an opportunity to say any words if they wish to. Okay, so any questions for staff or the applicants before we call for speakers? No questions on this one, and so we'll go -- we'll ask if there are any speakers here for item number seven. You could just give us your name for the public record, please.
Hello, my name is Andre Jelasku, and I'm a resident here in Vancouver, just at Cambian Second down the street. I am in favor of this application, as I believe attached homes are now out of reach of most young families, and I think stack townhomes are the next best thing. Thank you.
What's the name again?
Will you get your name again?
Yes, sorry. Andre Jelasku.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any -- do you wish to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Jamie Ha, and I currently live in a one-bedroom apartment on Cambian 30th. I do support the rezoning of the 15-unit townhomes, as I am looking to upsize into a townhome, and I cannot afford a single-family home in Vancouver. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here to speak. And last call, are there any more speakers here for item number seven? Okay, seeing none, we will close the speakers list. And as we've had a very few public comments since 5:00 p.m., we'll close the public comment period and go to any closing comments from staff?
[inaudible]
Okay, any closing comments from the applicant team?
No comments.
Okay, no comments there. Any questions for staff from -- or the applicants from council? So someone prepared to make a motion?
[inaudible]
Okay, Counselor Louie moves. Counselor DeGenova will second. Any debate on the motion? So we'll go to the screens to vote on item number seven. Okay, we have 10 votes in favor, unanimous support for the recommendations. That means we have approved rezoning on item number seven on 41st Avenue. Thank you to the applicants, to members of the community for being here to speak to that, and thanks to staff for the support. We're on to item number six, the text amendment 4066 McDonald Street, 2785 Alaman Avenue. Madam Clerk, can you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by Trillium Project Management Limited to amend CD1 328 Comprehensive Development District for 4066 McDonald Street and 2785 Alaman Avenue to permit the development of a three-story mixed-use building and a three-story duplex with a total of 186 meters squared, or 2,007 square feet, of commercial space and eight dwelling units. A height of 11.3 meters, or 37 feet, and a floor space ratio of 1.35 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning Urban Design Sustainability recommends approval of the subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing council has received five pieces of correspondence in support of the application and one piece of correspondence opposed to the application, this represents all correspondence received on this application up to 4:00 p.m. today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Zach Bennett is here, planner from Vancouver South Division to present the application. I might suggest, if you have a brief presentation, given the number of speakers, that'd be great.
I can do that. Can I still get the presentation? Thank you. So I'll skip straight to this point. This is a rezoning to allow a three-story mixed-use building and a duplex with a total of approximately 2,000 square feet of commercial space and eight dwelling units at the intersection of McDonald Street and Alaman Avenue in the Arbutus Ridge-Caristelle-Shaughnessy area. The site is at the northeast corner of that intersection, within a local-serving commercial area, and surrounded by RS single-family zoning. Staff have reviewed the application and conclude that it is supportable under the ARX Arbutus Ridge-Caristelle-Shaughnessy Community Vision, and we are recommending that the application be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in the agenda package. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that very brief presentation. Appreciate that. And I'll ask if the applicants wish to make some opening comments?
We'll waive our opening comments and be prepared to speak at the end, or answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from council for staff or the applicants before we call for speakers? Counselor DeGenova?
I do have some questions regarding, I suppose, these would be classified as townhomes, attached townhome structures? Is that what staff would call them? Row homes?
Yes.
Okay. And what is our stock supply of row homes and townhomes currently in the city of Vancouver? Available for purchase or rental? Do you have numbers on that?
For Vancouver South, thank you. In terms of the available stock of townhouses and row houses, I can't give you an explicit number. I know staff recently responded to council to a motion of several months ago, providing an update on activity in terms of planning around developing, enabling plans and zones for townhouses and row houses. In a nutshell, the supply is extremely limited. We have, from a planning perspective, what we've called the missing middle, in terms of, we have lots of apartment supply in both high-rise, mid-rise form, and significant single-family, which involves both secondary suites and laneway homes, but we have extremely little townhousing supply. We're working on a number of initiatives throughout the city, including Cambie Corridor Phase Three, the Joyce area, the Naimo area, and a number of areas to include townhouse zoning in our current plans. But in brief, very, very limited.
Thank you very much. Another follow-up question to that would be townhomes with lock-off suites. I'm not sure that these would be those townhomes, but is that something that staff is considering, moving forward for multifamily use, or I suppose those families that are classified as generation squeeze, where you have a member of family members living with you?
Yes, staff are actively exploring lock-off units in Cambie Corridor Phase Three in townhouse units. We've also been exploring this in a number of areas, for example, along Oak Street. So we do have some examples, but we are looking at trying to broaden that reach, again, through the community plans process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll move to speakers. Our first speaker is Rhonda Wilms, followed by Cynthia Callison. If you want to lower the podium, you can.
Good evening, council members. Pleased to be able to be here today. I'm not here to oppose this development, but I do have some specific concerns that I'm asking for your assistance with in clarifying some details regarding some of the parameters around the building envelope that is being proposed. As you will see, there are two different buildings that have been proposed on development, one being the mixed-use and one being the duplex zoning. So when this proposal first came out in March, there was a community meeting, and I must say that my first reaction was feeling really quite overwhelmed by the physical size and the imposing nature of the development proposal. And at that point, it was daunting and created some sleepless nights. And I was asking myself, well, why is that? Why does this feel so significant? And it made me look at what the comparables around the community might be, and what that relates in terms to my community where I live. I'm two doors down from the proposed duplex. So might I direct you to Appendix E., page three of four, if you have that available? My PowerPoint, I did not get to you in time. This is just a blow-up picture of the page that I'm referring to, and what it shows here is the outline of the adjacent house next to the proposed duplex. And so you see, really, the impact of the side-by-side properties. And I think the three things that I'm going to ask you to consider today, and I'll get back to the picture in a second, are number one, what is the building depth that would be considered to be reasonable and specific in terms of the duplex next to this adjacent RS1 home? Number two, what are the specific parameters around privacy and balcony area in the context of the neighboring dwellings? And number three, if there could be a rationalization and justification for the two-feet expansion of the mixed-use building height from 35 to 37 feet, given that everything else in the area is capped out at 35 feet. So when I go back to this picture here, I think the first thing that I emotionally had the reaction to was height. And I really appreciated the city planners meeting, whomever they could on individual basis, and being really responsive to the concerns that were expressed. So I do understand there have been some height reductions, and I'm very appreciative of that. The second most overwhelming issue, though, is really the extent of how far the duplex goes out into the rear yards, as well as the front yards. So as I looked at the district schedules for other RS1, RT7, RT8-zoned properties, which is a duplex and single-family homes, I read, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the extent of the building depth is limited to 35% of a maximum. What this building here proposed was actually just over 50% of the lot area in terms of the building depth, and that's not including the patio structure. If the patios were included, it actually extended out to 55%. So although in the recommendations that came out of the November meeting, there was a comment made regarding a reduction in depth, my question to the council today is, can there be a specific number placed on that so that there is a clear understanding of what the expectation is, so that this truly fits in with the community, integrates well, and really follows the ARX Community Vision guidelines, which really reinforces that this is a single-family dwelling, where although the duplex rezoning was actually not approved in the ARX Vision document, we understand that there's rationale behind it, and we can be supportive of that, particularly if there is that justifiable, reasonable, fair extension of the building depth. The next issue is really what happens when you look at this building again, and you see the proposed patios, which extend the entire elevation from the north side of the building for two stories. Again, I appreciate that the bottom deck has been deleted, according to the November council meetings, but I think what I'm also aware of is that the comparables that we were referred to, for example, McKenzie-Green up on 33rd and McKenzie, really does demonstrate the concept of how a balcony and deck area can be incorporated into the roof line, be really respective of privacy and sightlines, particularly in the context of this being a three-story building, recognizing that RS1 zoning has a cap of two and a half stories, and all of the duplex zoning is two stories unless the Director of Planning makes an exception. So in this case, there is an exception that's being made, so we really request that there be specific consideration and language around how to protect the privacy and sightlines, particularly from that elevated place. The third thing is the mixed-use building, and recognizing that it has started out as the initial presentation or the initial proposal as a flat roof, was redesigned to a 46-foot height, and then it's come back down to 37. My question still is, can you help me understand the rationale for extending the height cap by an additional two feet, when there's no added densification benefit? There's no justification or comparable way that I would have been able to get an inch, let alone two extra feet, beyond a cap of 35 feet everywhere else? And it's really about sort of that sense of clarity and rationalization and justice. So in summary, this is not a concern about the fact that this is a mixed-use property, but it is a concern that the development that was initially proposed not only met every single cap of all of the zoning, but exceeded, and in some cases exceeded greatly, the parameters that are documented in any other district schedule, whether that's for single-family dwelling or duplex dwelling. So again, to summarize, the three things that I'm hoping to get some clarity on, number one, what is the building depth that will be allowable for the duplex, recognizing that currently it is planned at 50 to 55%, and every other zoning is 35%? How can we ensure that the privacy will be maintained with the overlooking balconies that are at a three-story level without any guarantee of incorporation into the roof line? And thirdly, what is the rationale for the extension of the two feet more on the mixed-use building? Thank you.
Questions from Counselor DeGenova?
Just a moment. Thank you. Just had a question regarding, you had touched on a number of points. Was it the setback that was a concern to you? That you felt that with the height, with the extra height, that there should be more of a setback between sort of the property lines? I'm trying to understand if that was your main concern?
So the height for the property right on McDonald, the 46-feet, initial 46-foot property was incredibly overwhelming, and would have had massive shadow zones, and really would have facilitated this overwhelming looming look across into my backyard, my neighbors' backyards, with absolutely nothing in the area being comparable at all by a factor of 11.164 feet. So we're talking about two human heights taller than any other building within a kilometer radius. So it just felt really out of keeping. It has a visual sightline when you're coming down the hill on McDonald, when you're coming down the, or King Ed, rather, coming down the hill from Larch, and it didn't make sense because there was no added value. So still, with everything else being 35 feet, I guess my question regarding the height of that mixed-use building is, with all of the new construction going on in the area, everyone needs to be compliant with the height caps and the envelopes. New houses going up, they're not getting 10-foot stories every story, and I guess my question is, what is the rationalization for making an exception for this particular building compared to any other zoning in the area, or any other zoning that will be? This is the only CD1-zoned area. The property across the road is all C1, which has a 35-foot cap. Everyone around is RS1, which is also a 35 cap. So it, I don't understand what the extenuating circumstances would be to extend this extra grace of two more feet to this particular property, when that is not something that would be extended to other development proposals.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much for being here to speak tonight. Our next speaker is Cynthia Callison. Cynthia Callison here. Not here, we'll come back to that. Steve Ling, Speaker number three, followed by Ron Tremblay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me, allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Steve Ling, and I'm here with my wife up top here, and just we're going to represent ourselves as we are the property owners right next to the development property in question here. So we've lived in that house for approximately, just a little over a year now, except for the fact that I've actually lived in the Arbutus area for 47 years. And growing up in the '70s, I've actually walked past my future house multiple times, not knowing I was going to live there, but my friends and I would go from Trafalgar School to Jimmy's Market just to get candy. So we have a very different perspective now with housing here, and we've seen a very big change in the way Vancouver's changed, our neighborhoods changed. And my wife and I both have basically grown up in Vancouver, so we understand the needs on housing. So overall, we're pretty receptive to the change, for this development and the proposal around it. We know that the garage has been there for quite a long time, too, and they're probably going to miss their customers, but based on everything we've heard tonight, there's a lot of need for housing as well. However, I'd like to kind of bring up some of the concerns that we do have and some considerations as we work towards this development. And there's four areas that I'd like to kind of bring up. First, as Rhonda has mentioned, is around the building heights. There are several factors around this one, as around the heights, and the first was privacy. The duplex directly next to us is about a three-story building, and we're a two-story building, so our first concern was, well, we have skylights into our bathroom, and so what are the implications around that? We did take it upon ourselves to meet up with Trillium to talk about it. We didn't want us going to go off the handle, so we've actually met with them, and they've given us some assurances around how they're planning to do the building and where the windows are going to be, so they're going to work towards addressing some of those needs there. There are some shadowing issues, as Rhonda also mentioned. It's nice to hear that the structure is lowered in both the main building along McDonald and the duplex next to us. So those are, we would like to also consider, you know, any further reductions would be greatly appreciated on that. I know some of the other neighbors have expressed concerns about their views being impacted by this. For us, it hasn't been a big concern for us. We never had that view there in the first place, so, and views are something that we can't always protect. The next concern was the length of the duplex, as Rhonda also mentioned. When we first saw the model over there, we were a little concerned on how far it went back, in fact, going forward and beyond where our property, our housing ended, and kind of going back into the backyard area. That one is more, again, a privacy issue where people will be looking straight down into our backyard and into the rest of our neighbors all the way down the block. So I've heard that there's going to be some scaling back on that. I haven't seen any models on that, so I'd like to make sure that, again, some consideration is given around that to make sure that it's kind of aligned with the neighborhood and the privacy of not only ourselves and the rest of the neighbors. The other consideration, and this is probably a little bit more self-serving, but it's around the noise around the area. Our property will be right alongside their driveway that goes into the parcade. The parcade will run down, and obviously there's going to be a garage gate there. We have bedrooms just on that corner area. Again, we've worked with Trillium, and they're going to look to push the garage door further down into the parcade area. And I'm most concerned about cars idling there. So as the plans are approved, I'd like consideration, again, to be given around making sure the noise restrictions are there, so my family isn't listening to cars and gates going up and down all night, all night long. The other one is one that I think has been mentioned very much, and that's around street parking. As I went to the open houses, that is probably one of the biggest hot buttons around all the neighbors in the area. Not only is the commercial area there, but ICBC is right there, and trying to get parking around our place during the daytime is a huge issue, as all the ICBC staff are parking there, and it's really difficult to get parking. So any considerations or suggestions around how to improve the parking in that situation would be greatly appreciated. With the commercial properties going in place in the development as well, that could also impact the parking and make it a lot worse, and that's a real concern to me and my family.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here to speak.
Can I just one more minute?
Actually, that's your time. You've gone well over your time, so.
I was talking for my wife as well, and it's like, do I have eight minutes?
No, you're only speaking for yourself, unless you have three other people you're speaking on behalf of.
Okay, thank you.
You have to keep everyone to their time. Councilor Louie, questions?
Couple of questions.
Actually, you have questions from Councilor Louie.
For you. Just tell me, the project itself, you have a number of concerns with, you know, impacts in terms of proximity of the parking and the driveway and such and the noise. I neglected to hear, were you in favor or opposed, or would you approve with some changes?
I would approve with some changes.
With some changes. And can you just outline for me again what specifically, quickly, what the issues that you see is the most important?
There's four issues. Again, it was around building height, building length of the duplex, noise, and parking.
And parking itself. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Ron Tremblay is our next speaker, followed by Vicky Bell.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. My name is Ron Tremblay. For this project to happen, a tough thing has happened for me. I get to move. I operate the garage. I've been there 32 years. My family and I agonized for several years on whether to sell that property or not. And after deliberation and interviewing many developers, we picked Trillium because we thought that they were going to be the most flexible and help out with the neighbors that we care about, people in this room. It's nice to see you. The other thing that is happening that I see as a benefit to the city is, you know, how much change is happening. And I'm, for one, I don't like change either. But, you know, we got two schools in the neighborhood that have been upgraded seismically. Kitsellon High School, I'm a graduate of, it's now almost double the size it was when I graduated. And families are leaving the area and moving to the valley, and we need townhomes in Vancouver. My kids can't afford to buy in this city. They may never even buy a townhouse, but that's what's needed for, you know, lots of options. And I think that that neighborhood is, you know, prime for some fantastic facelift. It'll start the wave. So I'm going to approve of the situation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No questions for you? Thanks for being here. And Vicky Bell is our next speaker, followed by Jim Hall. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Vicky Bell, and I'm a small business owner, and I'm very much in support of this development on McDonald. I'd like to expand my business, and I would, it would be a wonderful opportunity for me to be in this new development. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Councilor Deal, you had a question? Okay. Next speaker is Jim Hall, followed by Dan Jakubek. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Jim Hall. I chair the Arbutus Ridge Careystyle Shaughnessy Vision, which was approved by council in 2006. We have, we're speaking in favor of this development. We have a very good relationship and appreciate what staff do. They refer to this document that the public came up with in all the applications. Developer will walk in and be asked to go and talk to us and see how their development fits in with our plan. We appreciate that. We provide comment back. Based on that, then, there's a reaction with the Planning Department on some of the suggestions, and then they have a public meeting, get comments there, suggestions come back, and then there's another public meeting sponsored by the city for all the input. If you saw, when we first looked at this, the developer came in with a very flat, from the streetscape, a very flat roof box-type structure, and both planning, and we were concerned about that. And the proposal now has sort of like dormers or peaked roofs along McDonald Street, so we think it looks better. We looked at the impact of the neighbor to the north, and on that, across the lane, and it steps down to the north. And of course, there's the buffer of the townhouse to the neighbor on the east, and I know there's still an impact, but we are realizing density, need for density in the city and more affordable housing, and so we do support density. But we want it on arterials where there's good transit service, not in the middle of a single-family residential, and this is on arterial. Also, our last speaker, we're trying to strengthen shopping areas within Arbutus Ridge Careystyle Shaughnessy, and so this puts more commercial along the street there and will probably strengthen the shopping destination. So again, we appreciate the support of staff, and we support this development.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor Deal has questions for you?
Do. Thanks. Over here. Thanks for coming out, and it's really important to have you come and speak on this. I appreciate that. I was going to ask staff this, but I'll ask you the question. They might nod their heads or not. I was thinking that probably the reason that there's a difference in the elevation is because a peaked, because a roof design element was added. So that was something that you wanted to see, was going from a flat roof to a peaked roof stylistically?
I think we both did. I'm not an architect, but just looking at it, the flat box shape before didn't look appealing, but would you like to comment on that?
I'll ask them later, but whether that has to do with the height, but because it does seem to match in with a lot of the neighborhood houses better with those peaks on it.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. It's not far from where I live. It's a great little spot. Thank you very much.
Great. And I welcome our Councilor liaison, Deal, and DeGenova. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Dan Jakubek. Hope I got that right.
Yep, that's right. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I'm a resident of Dunbar and live on West 24th and just about three or four blocks away from the subject site. I'm in sort of support of the project because it's going to bring additional townhouse product to the neighborhood, which we all recognize there's a real lack. I think that's a positive for the neighborhood because there's many older people who would like to downsize and still stay in the neighborhood. And in addition, younger families who have maybe grown up in the neighborhood who can't afford a single-family house could go for a townhouse option. I have two daughters, 10 and 8, and it'd be highly unlikely that they'll ever be able to afford the neighborhood that they've grown up in, so giving them this option is, would be great. Also, we do a lot of walking in the neighborhood, and I understand this project is very similar to what's being built, or what was built at 33rd and Mackenzie, the butter building, and that seems to have fit quite well into the neighborhood, and it provides additional commercial space and just an amenity to the area. And also, we do walk around down on the, near the subject site, and it's quite tired, and it really does need some redevelopment in that area to freshen it up. Thanks.
We have questions from Councilor DeGenova.
Hi there. I was looking for the number, but I was recently at an event, and there was a real estate specialist there who confirmed that there were only 53 townhomes for sale in the city of Vancouver, the entire city of Vancouver. You were talking about affordability and your daughters and what you hope they might be able to, where they may live later on. Do you think that the supply right now in your neighborhood or across the city, I mean, we know what it is, but do you think that it certainly would need some work if it's going to remain affordable for one-year kids?
It's totally inadequate. There has to be lots more townhouse projects, and along the main artery seems to make the most sense to me, and what staff is doing with Camby Phase Three makes sense. But yeah, I think the other gentleman mentioned that there's been big upgrades to the schools in our neighborhood, Kits, and then Lord Kitchen are just down the street from us. And, you know, I look at the single-family, our street, and there's a lot of vacant houses, and I wonder what kids are actually going to go to those schools because there doesn't seem to be many families moving in. And we, I'm not young anymore, but we're sort of the youngest group on our, on our street, and I think the townhouse is really the only alternative for a lot of individuals.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks for coming to speak. Next speaker is Wes Adrian, followed by our last registered speaker, Helen Wood.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I just want to add a couple of things that my wife wasn't able to get in the first talk. We have 32 signatures that support a reduced height at 35 feet from neighbors in the surrounding area, and also a reduced envelope. The poster that Rhonda showed shows the duplex east elevation. It shows the two balconies, which look directly down on the adjacent properties. Also, the front balcony looks down on the adjacent properties as well. We were told to look at Mackenzie-Green, which was mentioned as a comparable. Mackenzie-Green does it much better. There, they have a single balcony on upper level contained within the roof line. They have dormers, which prevent side views, and much more neighbor-friendly, much more beautiful design, and I think it's something that the developer should look at. Thanks.
Okay. And no questions for you, so thank you for being here. And Helen Wood is our last registered speaker, and we'll see if there's any more.
Mayor and council, excuse me, I've got a cold. My brother owns a townhouse that's across the street from the proposed townhouse on Alamane Avenue, and I've rented there for about 13 years, so I know the area. I agree with the problem, there's a problem with the view, and the person who owns the next one, my brother's 2782 and 2780, or sorry, 2786, we both look right at where that's going to be and how it's going to stick up above the trees, and the trees are really high there. So it is a view issue. Secondly, are there any desperately needed rental units in this new building or townhouse? Or is it all purchase? I agree with the issue of the height of the building, as Rhonda was mentioning, and the parking on the street is atrocious. Between teachers from Trafalgar School and the ICBC staff and people coming in to, you know, to get licenses renewed and so on, it's nearly impossible to get a space to park in the front of your building. Now, we're lucky enough to have spaces in the back, but if someone comes to visit you, they may be two blocks away. The other thing is, I was well acquainted with the previous rent, the renters of the little house that's going to be demolished in order to put this townhouse up. And I was told by her that when it rains hard, they can see a film of oil on the grass in their backyard. So I just want to let people know that, and my concern is, well, it's an environmental concern, and that that is thoroughly checked, double-checked, checked, and triple-checked before anything happens. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here, and that is all for our registered speakers, so I'll ask three times if there are any more speakers for this item, item number six, a text amendment of McDonald and Alamane. Are there any more speakers here for item number six? Last call, speakers for item number six?
I just want to say, too, that Wes and Rhonda have done a marvelous job of looking at the proposals and suggesting monifications, and I just wanted to say congratulations to them for that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And no more speakers for item number six. So we will close the speakers list, and as we've had very few or no comments since 5:00 PM, we will close public comment period. And And any final comments from staff on this item?
No comments.
Okay. Any final comments from the applicants?
Michael Brown from Trillion Project Management. I want to thank council and staff for reviewing this with us tonight and all the hard work that staff's been put in. I'd just like to address a few of the issues that were brought up by the speakers who I thank for coming out and taking the time to speak. In terms of the length of the duplex building, we do have a design condition in it that requires the deletion of the overhanging balcony and the shrinking up of the duplex. We do support that. We realized after the model was built as well that it did seem to encroach too far into, into the neighboring area and we do support the reduction of that. For balconies, again, the cantilever balcony has been a design condition that that's deleted and the other balconies that will be on the, the project would have proper screening in place to prevent any overlook as well as there's a design condition on the duplex that incorporates the third story into the roof form, more in keeping with the transition to the single family houses. We did support also the reduction in height that was brought about by, through the neighborhood consultation process. The 37 versus 35 feet height, I think that really comes about as the, as the former C1 zoning didn't really allow for, you know, adequate commercial heights. And the commercial heights that we want to see now to make commercial spaces more viable for all types of businesses require a little bit of extra height. No longer is a 10-foot ceiling okay for a commercial space. They look to go to 12 or 14 feet in those commercial spaces. So that allows us to get the, a good height into the commercial areas. With Steve and Jenny, the immediate neighbors, we have worked with them on the parking gates and agreed that we would be pushing the parking gates as far into the underground as possible to mitigate noise concerns. We've looked at all of the windows that are facing their building and tried to design them in such a way and will continue to design them in such a way that it eliminates any possibility of looking into each other. From a street parking perspective, there are 15 residential stalls for eight residential units, so virtually two for every unit. There's also an additional four commercial stalls, a loading bay, as well as an accurate accessible stall. So I truly believe there's adequate parking on the site. In conclusion, we really feel that the project is consistent with the Arbutus Ridge Cares Del Shaughnessy vision. It will go a long way to revitalizing and improving the neighborhood commercial in the area of McDonald and Alamane. It provides much-needed, family-oriented townhome, townhomes and duplex forms in a primarily single-family neighborhood. It felt well with the neighborhood and I think the design conditions that have been imposed through the rezoning respond well to the concerns from the neighborhood over its height and its massing.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And so we've had closing, closing comments for both staff and applicants. I've got three counselors on the queue, but we are at that point where either we are going to refer this for a decision at a later time or date tomorrow or later and have questions emailed to staff accordingly. I'm curious, do you have questions? Counselor Carr, Counselor Reimer, do you have questions as well? Okay, we have four counselors with questions, so, and we have 15 people waiting to speak on the next item. Well, it's short means we're still going to eat another half hour or something with questions and debate and decision. So I think, oh, we could do it tomorrow at the council meeting following committee. If that works, then we can go to the next item. And here's speakers. Our staff here tomorrow to, to be able to deal with responding to questions. Okay. So we have a motion, Counselor Stevenson, to refer, and second by Counselor DeGenova. And so that means we have completed the public hearing component of this. Counselors can email questions to staff and which staff should we? Okay. To Zach Bennett. And we will have answers. We'll deal with the answers and debate and decision on this item tomorrow at council, which is immediately following the committee meeting. Probably sometime in the afternoon tomorrow, probably quite late in the afternoon tomorrow before we get to the, the decision steps on item number six. Okay. Thanks to the speakers for being here to speak to that tonight and we'll be back to that one. I'll call the question on referring that to tomorrow as unfinished business. All those in favor? Any opposed that carries unanimously? Thank you. And that means we will move right along to our final item tonight and that is the rezoning for 5050 to 5080 Joyce Street. And Madam Clerk, please read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Enrique Partners Architects to rezone 5050 to 5080 Joyce Street from C2C Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit development of a 30-story mixed-use building with commercial retail units at grade and 256 residential strata titled units above. 65% being family-oriented units, a height of 89.33 meters or 293 feet and a floor space ratio of 15.37 are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, council has received 19 pieces of correspondence in support of the application and one piece of correspondence opposed to the application. This represents all correspondence received on this application up to 4:00 PM today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have Rachel Harrison here, who's our rezoning planner for Vancouver Midtown Division, to give us a presentation on this application. Welcome.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rachel. I'm the rezoning planner. The site that we're looking at today is located on the east side of Joyce Street, just north of the Joyce Calling Wood Skytrain Station. The proposal is being considered under the Joyce Calling Wood Station Precinct Plan, which is approved by council in June 2016. It will guide more intensive development around the Skytrain Station, create a more vibrant local shopping street, improve pedestrian connections and add new opportunities for housing. This is the first rezoning application to be considered under this plan. This slide here shows the future full buildout of the Joyce Calling Wood Precinct Plan. It identifies the subject site, it's shown here in yellow, as one of the three, the three mixed-use tower sites at the intersection of Joyce and Van Ness. For this site, the plan sets a geodetic height limit of 189.5 meters, which is equivalent to the height of the wall development, the most prominent building in this area. In the subarea J1 around the station, this area, the plan does not prescribe a maximum So this application is to construct a 30-story mixed-use building with commercial on the ground floor and 256 residential strata titled units above. The applicant has increased the number of three bedrooms since the open house from 26 to 54 units. Now the application has 65 two and three bedroom units. The proposed FSR is 15.37. I think I'll just skip over this slide. I'd like to take the time now to answer a couple of questions that came up at referral. The first question was asking staff to provide further comment on why the proposed floor plate width slightly exceeds the Joyce Calling Wood Station Precinct Plan. The second question was to explain the shadow studies a bit further that were in appendix F. And number three, to provide more comment on the proposed number of parking spaces relative to the high number of family units proposed in the building. I'll respond to the first two items and I'll let engineering respond to the third item at the end of my presentation. So this, this slide shows the floor plate of the proposed development. In the Joyce Calling Wood Precinct Plan, the building floor plate and the building width are guidelines as opposed to policy. And this allows us to look at things on a case-by-case analysis. And so in this situation, in order to achieve those more, the three bedroom units, the proposed floor plate area has increased by 161 square feet. So the diagram on the left shows that, that increase. It's shown there in red. And the diagram on the right also shows how the tower has shifted slightly to the north to allow for a more generous setback up against the pedestrian walkway. And the new shift in the tower is proposed, shown in red. This is the shadow analysis in appendix F. It shows the shadow of the proposed building at the September Equinox. The darker rim that you can sort of see at the edge, it's at the northern edge of the shadow, indicates how much more shadow occurs due to the proposed larger floor plate, which I just spoke about, and also the building shifting to the north. As part of council's adoption of the Joyce Precinct Plan, a public benefit strategy was also approved by council. Key components of the strategy shown in this table include funding for affordable housing, childcare, library and pedestrian improvements. As per the Joyce Calling Wood Precinct Plan, which directed staff to liaise with key community stakeholders to provide advice on the consideration of the CACs, staff held two meetings with stakeholders and also distributed questionnaire at the rezoning open house. So based on this feedback and also internal staff discussions on priorities, it's recommended that the cash CAC of $4.719 million from this rezoning be allocated to a renewed and expanded Calling Wood Library. And as a reminder, council made a decision on, in November, that 1 million of the remaining transportation CACs from the wall development would be reallocated to fund immediate pedestrian improvements near the station. I think I'll skip over that slide. So in conclusion, staff have reviewed the application to rezone 5050 to 5080 Joyce Street and conclude that the application is in keeping with the Joyce Calling Wood Precinct Plan. Thank you. And staff are here to answer any questions you may have, as well as engineering.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Harrison, for that presentation. And we are, I'll ask the applicants if they wish to make some opening comments speaking to the application. Okay. Available for questions, no presentation necessary. So we'll go to questions from council. Counselor Carr? Or staff? Or the applicants?
That was a holdover.
Oh, is it? Okay. Counselor DeGenova? She's, they're all holdovers. Okay. So we have no questions at this time for staff or the applicants. We'll go right to the speakers list. And first up is Jack Ong, followed by Denise Brooks and then Jennifer Grey-Grant. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm part of St. Mary's Parish, which is part of the bigger Roman Catholic archities of Vancouver. We'd like to start by thanking city staff for their work leading up to the Joyce Calling Wood Precinct Plan and including us in the work, the various information sessions already held in the community thus far and for future sessions still to come. We'd also like to thank council for having kicked off an intensely productive series of community-based discussions between various groups like the Calling Wood Neighborhood House, Calling Wood BIA, Community Policing, the Joyce Area Residents Association, Adrian Dix and Don Davies, among other vested organizations and individuals. To quickly reiterate, our plans are for up to 500 units of rental apartments within a mixed-use development within half a block of the Joyce Calling Wood Skytrain Station. As many of, as many as 160 of the planned units are an expansion and extension of the current seniors housing service that is managed by our Catholic Brothers at Columbus Charities. St. Mary's Parish is located at 5251 Joyce Street and we support the proposed rezoning of 5050, 5080 Joyce and look forward to what we believe to be the first steps in the renewal of our neighborhood. It seems a bit self-serving for us to stand here and publicly state that we are in favor of applying some of the CAC funds generated from this proposed development towards the relocation of the Calling Wood Library branch onto potentially the future St. Mary's development site, but also entirely appropriate and relevant. The archities of Vancouver and its 83 separate parishes plays a significant and meaningful role in the delivery of services and amenities to the people of Greater Vancouver. The new public library on the St. Mary's site in coordination with an expanded, contemporary and seismically sound St. Mary's Elementary School, daycare facility and a publicly accessible green space, along with rental housing in close proximity to public transit hubs, makes good sense. Other members of our neighborhood will make their case later this evening for continued and additional support of their service delivery and we at St. Mary's want to recognize the good and necessary work that they do for the community, especially in light of the rather massive demographic changes proposed in our area. We look forward to coming back before this council at a public hearing for the rezoning of St. Mary's Parish land packed full of community benefits, hopefully this time next year. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here to speak. Next speaker is Denise Brooks.
Hello, Denise Brooks, and I just wanted to say I agree with everything Jack says. He's so eloquent. And yet, at the same time, I'm, I'm here to speak against the rezoning. I'm not, not based on the merits of, of the rezoning, but because of the problem related to the noise generated from the Skytrain. I have, I spoke to council before on this issue and presented in my, in my documentation that I gave to the council, the research, that the bulk of research is, is now pointing toward noise pollution contributing to health effects and particularly, and particularly disabilities in children. Right? So anyhow, I talked about this and we followed up. I had a wonderful follow-up from council, talked to Ian in planning, have a much better understanding of the process between TransLink and, and the council and, and how it can come to be that we can approve buildings when we have no noise model, no environmental impact statement, no concept of what you're exposing the people in those buildings to. There is no measurement, there's no monitoring, there's no accountability. So I went and I spoke to TransLink board last week and presented to them basically what I presented to council before. And it seemed, they seemed quite receptive. In fact, one count, one of the board members stated to the other board members, you know, perhaps if we want higher density near our, you know, the transit centers, we have some obligation to monitor the noise or to, to guarantee a noise level. And I was thinking, yes, yes, you do. And, and actually, we have a responsibility to have that in place before we continue to approve buildings next to what we know is a transit system that's exceeding safe limits. I know they say over and over again, but it's steel on steel. And I have to think, I've lived it all over the world and gone on transit systems all over the world and I can't think of a single one, except maybe, maybe the Japan like bullet train, that wasn't steel on steel. And we deal with this in other places. We deal with noise levels. So I want to say, I want to put this idea forward that this is a very serious World Health Organization published effect, that we're putting kids at risk every day by not taking this seriously and not doing something about it right away. Think of it as our asbestos. It was a great idea. It was nobody's fault that we put it in all our schools. Right? It was harmless. It was a natural element. And now we know that it's killing people. A million years of healthy life lost in Western Europe alone, according to the World Health Organization. And that includes kids, not just cancer, not just heart disease, it includes kids. We can't pretend that the scientific information- We can't pretend that the scientific information isn't out there, that we can just ignore it, that we can pretend it doesn't exist, and that it's not hurting people. So before you approve this, please make TransLink accountable and ask to have a noise model given to your acoustic engineers, that they use to project their noise calculations, given their vibration system that they use to measure their train noise. I don't think that's in place. I think it should be in place. Otherwise, you know, and it's in your notes now, and it's in TransLink now, that this is, noise is killing people. I don't know how many people here. We could find out if we wanted to, and I think we should. I'm sorry to be so glum. It's been a long day. But I'm a computational biologist at B.C. Cancer. I work on mesothelioma all the time. And I get to work on that partly because of mistakes good, well-meaning people made trying to make the world a better place with asbestos. And I don't want to be working on noise-related diseases. Maybe I am. And it just breaks my heart, but especially the kids. You're going to put family units in that building. Do you know how much you're going to be exposing those kids to noise levels? The World Health Organization tells you how to calculate it. They have the model out there. It's published. You can figure it out. We can figure it out. It's not rocket science, but it's not in your plan. And I don't know why. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here. Thanks for coming. Our next speaker is Jennifer Grey-Grant, speaker number three. And she's followed by speaker number four, Paula Lindner, and then Melanie Cheng. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robertson and city councillors. Good afternoon, Jennifer Grey-Grant, Executive Director at Collingwood Neighborhood House, and I will be speaking in favor. Tonight, we have a few people speaking to issues attached to the rezoning. Some are from CNH and others who are partners in our neighborhood. I just wanted to offer some context. West Bank approached our neighborhood in 2014 with their plans. Since then, they have attended numerous board meetings of various organizations in Renfrew Collingwood, as well as the city consultative sessions. While I think it's fair to say the project is not universally welcomed and that the height is considerable next to much smaller buildings, people have generally appreciated that West Bank has increased the number of three-bedroom units, which we have seen as attracting additional families, which in turn helps with school attendance, which is a concern in our neighborhood. Another issue is affordable housing. Renfrew Collingwood, in large measure, welcomes affordable housing. There is a fear that condo towers, however, displace current residents as they pump up the value of adjacent land, ripening it for further development and further displacement. We would urge council that if you approve this tower tonight, the council also have conversations with our help, CNH can help with that, on the concept of affordable housing in our neighborhood. And I think this, referring back to the modular housing discussion, sort of reinforces that need in the neighborhood. One concern with the West Bank towers that will bring further car and pedestrian traffic to the area that has serious issues with street and sidewalk safety already, you'll hear more about this issue from another speaker. The city is currently looking at the section of Joyce from Euclid up to Kingsway, and we sincerely hope that council will not approve towers there, but we are aware that the connections between Lower Joyce and the Kingsway shopping area could be improved. The community amenity contribution from this project will be about $4.7 million. Locally, there is broad support for a library, as Collingwood Library is small, outdated, and very inconveniently located. There is a possibility of library space, as Jack said, and the planned redevelopment of St. Mary's across from Collingwood Neighborhood House. A library near Joyce Collingwood Skytrain Station would drive up local literacy rates. Renfrew Collingwood children score low on parts of the Early Development Index, which internationally measures young children's ability to meet age-appropriate developmental expectations. Further, the lowest uptake on library cards in our city is among residents of Collingwood Village. A library would respond to both of those issues. The neighborhood wants to see cultural space within a library. Earlier this year, we released a plan funded in part by the city, which identified gaps and opportunities for arts and cultural infrastructure in Renfrew Collingwood. Basically, there is almost none in the neighborhood right now. We see the library as a huge opportunity to include cultural space. Finally, Collingwood Neighborhood House. Ever since this tower was proposed, there has been talk locally, with the developer and with the city, about the possibility of CNH receiving part of West Bank's CAC, Community Amenity Contribution, as an endowment. This would assist us in providing the program services and opportunities at our main site and annex set to open in 2018 for our new neighbors to get involved in the life of our neighborhood. Our efforts completely align with many of the Healthy City Strategies' goals. The idea of an endowment for CNH is well-supported in the neighborhood. Now, apparently, however, the city is no longer provides operating funds from CACs, even as endowments. Apparently, CAC funds generated in Vancouver are now all to be earmarked only for capital uses in response to guidelines from the province. Last month, council passed a motion expressing its support for additional amenities, services, and operating funds for our neighborhood as it grows, specifically mentioning CNH. Tonight, our board president will ask that this intent to fund CNH's growth be embedded into a memorandum of agreement. We sincerely appreciate council's intention that the city supports CNH with additional funding as the neighborhood grows. We want to ensure that that intent is embedded. I am proud of the work that we do at Collingwood Neighborhood House. Our staff are innovative, have a deep reach into the neighborhood, and work very collaboratively. We are part of a rich partnership in Renfrew Collingwood with other service providers, residents, businesses, and politicians. You are hearing from some of those partners tonight, but I want to acknowledge as well that you too are our partners. We sincerely appreciate the support we receive from the city of Vancouver. Thank you. It makes a difference.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grey-Grant. We have Counselor Meggs first with questions.
Just, could you repeat and clarify, please, the comment you just made about the CACs? Because as I understand the report, there's about $4.7 million, and you're, as I understand it, you are sympathetic and like the idea of it going to a library? And you want the remainder as an endowment, or that's the proposition?
No, there have been a lot of discussions about this over the years. This project has been, you know, out there for a couple of years now. And so as the discussion has gone back and forth, there had been talk of there possibly being an endowment. Collingwood Neighborhood House got an endowment over 20 years ago when it built the site at Joyce. And so there was a discussion, because when you have an endowment, the money is protected, and so you take the interest each year, and that helps with operating funds. And so the concept that that could happen again. But what's happened in the last couple of years is that these guidelines have come through from the province in 2014. Our position is they're guidelines, it's not legislation, that the city has wiggle room, but other people see it differently. So what we're saying is, given the motion that passed in November, we would like to see that council's intent embedded into a memorandum agreement. And so that would come, the motion itself talked about operating funding and grants and that sort of thing. It didn't talk about an endowment.
Okay. Counselor Carr, questions?
Yes, thank you. It's really around the same line. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for coming. I'm trying to get very clear, that you want to embed council's intent from the last meeting where we considered the precinct plan to, in an MOU between the city and Collingwood Neighborhood House, and you want to see that that's attached to this particular report? Is that... We'd like to see, with the annex opening in 2018, there is a need there. And I think, we heard previous speakers, when they were talking about modular housing and looking ahead to this one, talking about how, you know, there's not going to be a community center in the neighborhood, where are the services? And we're saying, we're about to open an annex in, you know, about a year and a bit. And so some kind of operating support for that. And I think that was embedded in the motion last month. But we're saying that if there was some kind of memorandum of agreement, then that could go forward so that it really is truly embedded as we move forward. And there is more development in the neighborhood. Okay. Melissa, let me ask the staff about how that, how that can get attached in this particular motion, which deals with the development. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Louie?
Yes. Ms. Grey-Grant, thanks for coming, and your comments exposing just how complicated this is trying to build a community. Some of the comments you made were that you're not looking for an endowment, but you'd want to more formalize, more formally create a relationship in regards to new development in the city and your organization. So the motion that I moved and was passed articulates how we would be supporting, and not just from CACs, but from a range of sources. So how do you envision that arrangement working with the number of different groups that are in the area?
So first of all, I didn't say we didn't want an endowment. We'd love an endowment, but I don't think it's possible. Because the motion that was passed did not mention CACs, because the city no longer uses CACs for operating. That's happened quietly, you know, slowly over the last couple of years. And so it doesn't use it for that anymore. In the past, it would have been perhaps more palatable on our part to be able to say, "Look, this is being built, and there is CAC being generated by that, so a portion go to capital, a portion go to operating." There's been a shift in city policy around that, and so I can't come here tonight and ask for that, because it's not city policy anymore. That doesn't take away the need for that operating. It just removes one option for us to ask for.
That's right. And that's why the motion was moved the way it was.
And the motion is great, but it doesn't feel like it's embedded. It feels, it's a city motion, and it seems to me that when there, what has happened in the past is when there's this kind of a development, there's been an opportunity to ask for operating and in many cases, get it. And as we don't have that option anymore, it feels like when there is development like this, there should be some kind of an opportunity for us to say, "Okay, you're bringing all of these people into our neighborhood. They are going to need the services. We have a building already. We don't need to ask for capital from this, but we do need operating." And so to tie it to that somehow, I don't know what that would look like. So I can't, I don't have a legal background, but I could say that it feels like the option that we would have had up until about a year ago is gone. And so, but we see the relationship between the increased density, the relationship between the need that that increased density brings to our neighborhood, but that tool's gone. So what do we do?
And I can say confidently, because council did pass my motion, that council sees that relationship as well. And I think you've articulated it well, that the best practices paper that the province produced in terms of allocation of CACs constrains us. And I recognize your interpretation versus what we try to do, which is listen to the province as the best we can. Another comment that you made was the connection between the upper and lower areas on Joyce Street, between Kingsway and the transit precinct itself. You said, "No towers." Have you thought more of what you would like in that area? It's currently all single-family, and it's kind of a dead zone. Well, not to say that houses are dead zones, but...
Yeah. No, I went to the drop-in and had some conversations there. It was an unfortunate location. There weren't a lot of people there because, you know, so I hope that a lot of people do respond online. We're trying to push that. I think it's not really up to me. I think that what I have heard is there's a fear that it will be very dense development along there. Single-family housing was not an option on the questionnaire that was handed out at the open house. It started with duplexes and went up from there. And I would say, maybe the whole range should be asked of the neighborhood, rather than limiting it, you know, immediately starting with more density than is there now. So I think, what I would say is, I wouldn't want to see huge heights along there. I think it would be out of place. It would be weird along the hill. However, I do think that there has to be a better connection. I think it was Counselor Cheng who brought that up at the meeting back in June, asking for that. Because right now, there is not a good connection between the two shopping areas, and there are two transit areas as well. So in terms of the height, I can't give you a height exactly right now off the cuff. I haven't looked at it enough. But I think what I have heard is, please don't go too high. It's just too much for the neighborhood to take.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all your questions. Thanks very much for being here. Paula Lindner is our next speaker, followed by Melanie Cheng, number five. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Robertson and city councillors. I'm here to support this proposal. My name is Paula Lindner, and I'm the President of Collingwood Neighborhood House, Board of Directors, with this being my fourth year serving on the board. My background is in nonprofit management and major gifts fundraising, but I'm currently an owner and operator of a small business in the East Vancouver area. And I also live in the Collingwood-Renfrew area myself. Tonight, I would like to speak to you specifically about the amenity attached to the tower project. I understand that being valued at $4.7 million. With each approval of new developments you make in our neighborhood, you're also approving the arrival of more people into our community. As newer residents arrive, Collingwood Neighborhood House and other service providers will be required to provide services to meet those increased demands. And it must be noted that we're more than happy to do so. We want to welcome new neighbors, ensure that they have every opportunity to be involved and engaged in the neighborhood, and develop a sense of belonging within it. But these efforts will take increased work on our part, and that's where we ask your help. Thankfully, a few years ago, city council approved Collingwood Neighborhood House receiving 10,000 square feet of space in the Wall Centre project on Boundary Road. Our annex, as we call it, is calling the space, will be open in 2018. With the arrival of residents in the Wall Centre, and then in the West Bank Tower, assuming you'll approve it tonight, you are guaranteeing that we will experience increased demands for our services. We want to do the community building and engagement work that both meets our goals, as well as meet the goals of the Healthy City Strategy. But we need resources to open and run this space. In the past, we would be able to ask a part of the $4.7 million Community Amenity Contribution, or CAC as it's known, generated by the West Bank project, be put into an endowment for us, so we could use this annual interest to help the operating costs, as Jennifer had been talking about. Since the city apparently will no longer spend community amenity contributions on operating costs, we are asking that we receive operating funds from you with help for the annex, as directed in your motion passed last month, which reads, "That council reaffirm its support for additional amenities and services for Joyce Collingwood Neighborhood, including Collingwood Neighborhood House, beyond the identified expanded new Collingwood Library, new childcare facilities, or affordable housing. Further, that subject to appropriate approvals, the additional amenities and services be funded through grants, operating budgets, and other appropriate means in order to support improved services to the growing area population." We appreciate the intent of the motion, and to ensure that Collingwood Neighborhood House and others get the required funding to cope with the influx of new residents these developments will bring. At this time, I'd like to add my voice to ask that this memo agreement, so at this time, when we are in the process of approving this tower, that council possibly consider a memo of agreement, with its intent to extend operating funding to Collingwood Neighborhood House is fully, to be fully enshrined. In past years, at this time during a rezoning hearing, we would have requested CAC fundings for an endowment, as we did a little over 20 years ago, at which time city council approved a $2 million endowment for Collingwood Village, which every year has now provided Collingwood Neighborhood House with an annual interest payments towards our operations. As you will not direct CAC funds to an endowment, but have expressed very welcome intent to ensure operating funding for a Collingwood Neighborhood House in your November motion, we ask you pass a possible memo of agreement that you had already talked about, asking your staff to look at. Finally, we sincerely want to thank you for the annex space. We really needed this additional room to expand the success of our current facilities, which are already being fully used by programs, projects, and initiatives that meet the needs of the residents of our neighborhood. While we are desperately in need of additional staff space as well, we have great plans for continued growth programming in the new space, but we do need your help to get there. I hope you'll give serious consideration to pass such a memo, and I'm looking forward to fully embedding such operating funding, so we can continue the work that we do innovatively, broadly, and interculturally in our neighborhood, to give all residents a sense of belonging in our community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You have questions from Counselor DeGenova first?
Thank you very much. You had touched on the struggles of trying to find support for operating costs, and I've worked with a number of nonprofits, and Counselor Paul's not here this evening, but she did put forward an amendment to the budget to look at over the next many years, providing organizations with funding that's not just capital, because as I'm sure you know, and I'm going to ask you, how difficult is it to find grants for, that will cover operating costs and funds? How difficult is it out there? Do you mind sort of describing what you go through to do that? And not just for me, but for everyone, but I'd particularly like to know, as you're asking us for this. us for this.
Nonprofits are continuously struggling with having to ask for new and innovative or capital funding, building more, building new, building innovatively. And yet, any programs that succeed and programming that supports the community and has proven success is often hard to continue on with funding from grants, from family grants, from governmental agencies on all three levels, that we're constantly sort of working towards just asking and getting, giving the feedback to let you know, let funders know how successful a program is. And they spend a lot of time doing that rather than doing the work that needs to be done. So, for example, the city looking at potentially expanding to a multi-year funding system, which has just been recently provided for some of the grant funding that some of the operations at nonprofits such as Collingwood Neighborhood House do, is one huge step forward. And these other types of steps of embedding funding into capital projects or capital, sorry, into endowments, so you can get continued operational funds without having to at least worry about that section, so you could go do programming and get support for programming or per-use programming costs, makes sense. But it's hard to get just the very successful programs that are already out there funded on a year-to-year basis.
Would it be fair to say that it's easier to secure, there's more grants that you can apply for that limit you to only capital projects? But then if you do that, it's hard to find the operating funds to staff and program the spaces?
Absolutely, and that's why I'm standing here today. I mean, we have that space, the running of it on a year-to-year basis from day one is going to be very hard to find if we, we have to do that before we can put programs or staff into that space, make use of it.
Well, thank you for coming in for your suggestion. I know that Councilor Ball's amendment didn't pass, but we're going to have to look at creative solutions to support nonprofits.
Hey, that's your questions. Councilor Louie?
Well, thank you for coming today and talking about operating grants. You do know that, of course, the city supports you greatly, and we'll continue to do so, and we do so through our social grants, our community social grants program, which is exactly opposite of what Councilor DeGenova is speaking about. Councilor Ball's motion was related to arts and culture, which is another segment, and their initiative was to increase money significantly for the arts and culture components. I spoke clearly that my preference would be to support not just the arts, but making sure that our social services are supported wholly, because of course, you're behind in the level of support that arts and culture receives in the city. But that's just my preference. Councilor DeGenova? Councilor DeGenova speaks of the motion that Councilor Ball moved, and it's not related to yours, and just it seemed to be a misinterpretation. But I hope that you understand that there's a difference between cultural grants and our social grant program.
And I believe we get both.
Right. So just wanted to make sure that you understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor DeGenova, you have a point of order?
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I'm confused. Are we in question period or debate period?
Yes, we are in questions to.
Did you not hear the question?
I think Councilor DeGenova, it's a pot calling the kettle black. For someone that does not have a lot of questions in many of your inquiries with speakers, just caution you to disrupt the meeting like that with that kind of comment. So Councilor Reimer is next. With questions?
Yes, I think it's a very quick and easy question. I thought your points were very well articulated, both in terms of the challenges of nonprofits on operation funding, but also the specific request to the city. I was writing furiously but didn't get everything. Could you please email us the comments? Are they in, they sounded very well written out, so, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all your questions. Thanks for being here and all the good work the Neighborhood House does. Melanie Cheng is our next speaker, number five, and then Bill Murphy.
[inaudible]
Okay, beautiful. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Dix. And we've got Bill Murphy next. Is Bill here? Followed by a member of the Legislative Assembly, Adrian Dix, speaker number seven. Welcome.
Mayor Robertson, members of council, my name is Bill Murphy. I'm a longtime resident of the Collingwood area, now called Joyce-Collingwood, and currently a member of the precinct committee that you established last June. I'm a, as a resident member of the committee. I'd like to begin by thanking West Bank for approaching us in 2014 when they decided to ask to build. It was good to be consulted. The Joyce-Collingwood area has shown its willingness over the years to accept an increase in population and rezoning. Collingwood Village is certainly a wonderful example of that, where we had the city, the citizens, and concert, graystone, whatever they were called, resulting in the 1986 Joyce Station plan. As I say, that's highly successful because it was collaborative, and West Bank is showing leadership in that area. Now, Joyce Station area is a small, geographically a small area, measured in blocks, city blocks. It's not miles, it's not kilometers. We're very, what we're talking about is a very concentrated area. The tower is the beginning. There are two more towers suggested, and if I were to count, I could come up with 10 redevelopment proposals made. The latest from Vennett to Kingsway made December the 3rd and whatnot, just 10 days ago. So we're axing out the population in the area. And we're also putting, going to be putting pressure on the existing facilities that we have. For example, the Collingwood Neighborhood House, new residents in the form of seniors, children, teens, youth, adults, families, they'll all put demands on the Neighborhood House, and it's going to call for some creative solutions. I've accepted the fact that we're not going to get a community center, but we have access to Killarney and Renfrew. With increased funding to the Neighborhood House, we have a bus that we can take seniors, youth, families up for the open day services at Killarney or Renfrew. Skating, swimming, the fields, whatever the need is decided. Increase funding and have a bus driver take that bus with residents. It's a solution that is forced on us, but it's one that we need. So that's the Neighborhood House. There are other concerns that I might have. Daycare, is it going to be adequate with the great increase in population coming? Are parks, are there enough of them? Do we have to upgrade the facilities that are in existence right now? The crime prevention office, does it need more funds? What, how is its role going to change with this increase in population? Basically, what I'm thinking is that once the planning department is through with us, then we should have social planners come in. They can tell us what is going to be the impact of this increase in population over the years. They can make suggestions. Certainly, the library that is in the works is a good suggestion. More social areas are needed, maybe working with the Joyce area streetscape. All things that social planners could tell us if they worked with the community. So.
That's just about your time.
That's, I'm basically through. So what we can learn from the Joyce Station can be applied to other areas of the city also.
Okay.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. You have questions from Councilor Carr?
Thanks, Mr. Murphy. And I'm very interested if, in your capacity on the precinct committee, you came to a conclusion about whether or not you support or do not support this particular application?
Yes, but with reservations. As they say, it's not just buildings, it's the people, it's the impact. And my thought is that creative solutions, but also social planners, the insight that they can give, what is going to be the impact?
Yeah.
You know, because it's a small area geographically. I live on Spencer, and that's the outside of what is being rezoned.
Right. Yeah, I've already captured that. I'm going to send a question to staff around the cumulative impacts of increased population and the need for amenities and public services. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Murphy, for being here. Our next speaker is MLA Adrian Dix. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome to all of you for a long day. I wanted to say what an honor it is for me to speak after Bill Murphy and before Chris Tolu, because both of them, aside from being way better than me, both of them have contributed so much over really the last 35 years to the success of this neighborhood. It's had to do with development, yes, but also using development to build services and build community, and they've been so much a part of it. And all of us, I think, have a lot to learn from both of them. We had our first meeting, and I'm speaking in support of the application, we had our first meeting on the 50-50 Joyce project with West Bank on October 25th, 2013, members in the community. They had their first open house on February 19th, 2014. And throughout that time, the position of people in the community, I think, has been consistent on some very key points, some of which have been addressed in this application. The first is that there was an absolute need for family housing. We had been through a school closure process in 2010, and we've just been through a school closure process in 2016. And the fact is that many large apartments in our neighborhood, one of which, the one at Nanaimo and Kingsway was used as an example by the school board, that large buildings would not bring children. We needed to ensure that as the neighborhood developed, if we were going to approve new developments, that there would be sufficient two- and three-bedroom units. This is something we've been consistent with the developer, and I would say that West Bank has responded to this, and the city has responded to it. The city responded with its changes this year to ensure a minimum of 10% three-bedrooms and a minimum of 25% two-bedrooms, 35% minimum for family housing and such developments. And West Bank has gone beyond that in this development, with 54 three-bedroom units, 20% of the development, and a further 45% two-bedroom units to get to 65%. This, I think, especially the 20% three-bedroom, should be the minimum standard in our neighborhood to ensure that the goals of the original Joyce plan, which extend beyond the precinct, that it continue to be a place where families could come and live and raise children, happen as apartments, as towers are built, and as other accommodation is built. This was the point Melanie Cheng, who's the chair of the Graham Bruce PAC, was going to make here. She said, and I'm quoting from what she was going to say, "We really appreciate West Bank's willingness to accommodate families in their planning. They amended their plan to include 20% three-bedrooms and 65% family-oriented. This should be the new standard for building in our community." The second key point we consistently made is that as our population expands, there's going to be a need to have new services, that it's not just an issue of capital, it's an issue of operating funds. And the city's Joyce precinct plan noted that we were well below the city average in childcare, in arts and culture services, in recreation services, in trees, and in parks. So we were starting from a very low base, and the addition of thousands and thousands of new people and new units was going to put pressure on existing services that were already underserving the community. That's why, and we have a remarkable history with this in Joyce-Collingwood and Renfrew-Collingwood, we want, we support, and I think if the neighborhood's request could be, could not be any clearer with respect to CACs, we would like to have seen the CACs go at least in part to an endowment for Collingwood Neighborhood House, which is the key element of this, and which is also dealing with the addition of the annex. I appreciate the debate that's happened. I also appreciate the motion put forward by Councilor Louie and approved by the council that said that as projects such as this are approved, that additional amenities and services must be added, including Collingwood Neighborhood House. Jennifer Gray Grant has suggested, and I think it's a good suggestion, that this formed part of an agreement between the city, a memorandum of agreement between the city associated with this and other developments, and we hope to see that happen. It would be our druthers, of course, to see the endowment we received, the neighborhood received in the early 1990s extended now. And finally, of course, we want to see improvements in services in the community. And the idea of a library associated with the project at St. Mary's, which will do a lot for seniors' housing and affordable housing, is an outstanding idea. We don't have on the Expo of the Millennium Lines in Vancouver, a library on a Skytrain line. I think it would be enormously popular. If you spent any time at the Metrotown Library, you know that it would be used and used and used. It's critical in our community because of the issues that Jennifer raised, and it has strong support from all of us. So I'll leave it there because I'm at 4:59. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Good timing. No questions for you. Thank you very much for being here on behalf of the community. And we have, Chris Tolu is our next speaker. The famous, Chris Tolu, welcome back.
Welcome back. Do you think that maybe next time, considering all the density, we could be number one or two?
[laughing]
Thank you. I won't go over, excuse me, winter cold. We have to, we fully support the West Bank proposal. Sorry. West Bank spent, as we said, a lot of time with all of us, listening to our concerns, and they also agreed it was really important to all of us was the three-bedroom family housing units, and it will help our fight to save our schools. And on top of all of that, though, when you look at, we have a potential within that plan of another 9,000 residents coming to the area in the future, and that puts a strain on our non-existent resources. It's critical that we have sufficient resources to go with it so that the residents can feel at home in Renfrew-Collingwood. That's why we support that the CAC be used for moving the library. The library is a great idea, and then putting a lot, we hope to have a lot of cultural aspects within it, as well as the operating cost for the new CNH annex, which we fought very hard, Jennifer, to get. There's also was, and I was to speak on the other two issues, the widespread support for pedestrian safety measures at the Joyce-Vennett intersection, as well as close to that area. So we support that the $1 million fund that comes from wall construction to be put for that purpose. The Community Policing Centre, of which I represent, asks that we be involved in how that fund is distributed. I've talked to ICBC, and they said if we were working on it, they would like to be able to work on a little bit too, so maybe we can get a lot of work done around that area that does have a few, quite a few pedestrian accidents happening, and as well as we have a high incident rate of seniors in the area. So it's really important that that money be spent wisely within that area. The other is the $1 million from wall construction that was dedicated to be spent on parks and improvements in the area. And so far, we haven't seen, it hasn't even started, and nothing's happened, happened to that fund. We'd like to have some assurance that working closely with the community, the projects will be either started or well on their way in 2017. will be either started or well on their way in 2017. Thank you for your time. I think that, that council should be proud of the residents of Renford Callingwood for their forward thinking and absorbing so much density in a small area, and they should be commended for the way they have done it. It shows that by involving the community early, it's a win-win situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Tullu, for being here despite your winter cold. Thanks for all the good work at the CPC ongoing. And RJ Aquino is our next speaker, speaker number nine, followed by Cara Lewis.
Welcome. Welcome. Oh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robertson, good evening councillors. I am RJ Aquino. I'm a longtime resident of Joyce Callingwood. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Callingwood Neighborhood House, so you've heard from a couple of our representatives, and I'm actually sitting as the treasurer for Callingwood Neighborhood House. I am speaking in support, but more specifically, I'm speaking to really express what's been already brought up a few times about the value that Callingwood Neighborhood House brings. And I also wanted to just sort of reread the motion that has been referred to a few times in its entirety. The adopted recommendation read, or reads as follows, "That council reaffirm its support for additional amenities and services for the Joyce Callingwood neighborhood, including the Callingwood Neighborhood House, beyond the identified expanded new Callingwood Library, new childcare facilities, or new affordable housing. Further that, subject to further appropriate approvals, these additional amenities and services be funded through grants, operating budget, and other appropriate means in order to support improved services to the growing area population." Now, you've heard a lot of speakers give specifics around how the neighborhood is growing, what we're looking for in terms of safety, in terms of, well, money, but I want to add a little bit of color to the discussion by just describing Callingwood Neighborhood House's impact on me personally. And I speak for a lot of residents in the neighborhood when we, when we can see and actually say that Callingwood Neighborhood House plays an important role, even though that many people may take advantages of its services. I know that a lot of everyone's lives in the neighborhood are impacted through what Callingwood Neighborhood House does. For myself, I've lived in the neighborhood for over a decade now, and it's the longest I've ever lived in one place. And I, while I've had opportunities to move or consider moving, I find it difficult to remove myself and my family from the neighborhood because of the good things that Callingwood Neighborhood House does. My children were born and raised, or I'm raising them in Callingwood, and utilize the services. And Callingwood Neighborhood House provides a range of services for children all the way up to seniors, and it's something that, it's quite a testament to the effectiveness of the Neighborhood House when I continue, continue to hear testimonials from longtime residents that have, that were born and raised there and went through programming as children through the Neighborhood House, and have returned to volunteer, to become staff, and to contribute, and really give back to the neighborhood. I've also been on the board for nearly five years, and it's quite eye-opening to see the impact of the Neighborhood House from that perspective. And it's, it's, I can also speak to how Jennifer and the rest of the board have made conscious efforts to reach out to different, to the entire demographic in the neighborhood. And it's also remarkable how many young people are getting involved, so, because they feel they have a lot invested, and there's a lot at stake for them in that neighborhood. And, you know, really, I'd like to continue to see the support that the city has provided as the neighborhood grows and expands. And, you know, all of the services that Callingwood Neighborhood House provides directly tie into the healthy city strategy, and specifically goals like a good start, healthy human services, cultivating connections, and expressing ourselves. I also hope that council continues to recognize the role Callingwood Neighborhood House plays in the vitality, diversity, and livability of the neighborhood by providing tangible and sustainable support through the funding of its expanding operations. Further, I hope that consultations with the neighborhood and future engagements continue to improve in its clarity and context, and that there's a concerted effort that brings in the many stakeholders and perspectives of our growing and evolving neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Aquino. No questions for you. Thanks for being here. And our next speaker is Cara Lewis. She'll be followed by Alicia Barcello.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Cara Lewis. I'm from the Kekatla Nation. For many years, I've had dead-end jobs with no future. This year, I enrolled in a program called Blade Runners as I wanted a career in construction. I graduated from Blade Runners at the end of July, and with the support from Gary Jobin from Blade Runners, I was placed to work with a good-paying wage right away with Lower Mainland Steel. I work at Kensington Gardens on Kingsway and Gladstone. Today, I still work with LMS, and I've been given a raise. I like my job. It's really tough, but it's super rewarding to see the building get made, and I'm the one that's doing it. This proposed development at 50-50 Joyce Street will give employment opportunities to individuals looking to better their lives, much like myself. When I started at Blade Runners and created, it created hopes, self-esteem, but most importantly, a good-paying job and a career in the construction trades. This is why I support this proposed development. I'd want to thank LMS, as well as West Bank Projects Corp., for the opportunity they have given me, and many Blade Runners for over 10 years on their developments and opportunities they will create in the future for the youth of the Blade Runners program. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. You have questions from councillor Meggs?
Only one. Just how many folks like you do you think would be working on this project? Do you have any idea? How many are working where you are now, for example, from Blade Runners?
I work with one other person from Blade Runners, and he became a lead hand in like six months. So we moved out pretty quickly, and I know lots of people that went through Blade Runners and work in construction and still work with them today.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Thank you for being here and speaking. So our next speaker is Alicia Barcello. She's still here? Not here anymore? Okay. Next speaker is Chitha Manaranjan, followed by Devon Hasek.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chitha Manaranjan. I've been a longtime resident of the Renford Callingwood community, have lived there, I've grown up there, go to school there, and I've worked on various, or worked with various arts organizations and community developers and builders in the neighborhood for quite a while. I have to say, I'm happy to see that the expansion of Callingwood Library has been identified as a priority with the CAC funds. Callingwood Library has come up in conversations in the neighborhood for quite a while, and it's also been included in our community arts and culture infrastructure plan, which is why I came just to point this out, and I think councillor Lewy kind of brought that up as well, that Renford Callingwood is one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in the city, I think second only to the west side, but we often don't see the cultural infrastructure investment in our neighborhood. Often when I talk to people who don't live in our neighborhood, I tell them I'm from East Vancouver, and they go, "Oh, cool." Commercial drive, they say, "No, no, no, go a little further than that." They're like, "Oh," not so sure about there anymore. This is not to say that we don't have our, no, I'm very proud of Renford Callingwood, all the way. No, we're trying to bring them in, and I think that's the point. We're not to say we have a lack of cultural programming. We have quite many, many active arts and culture, arts and cultural groups in the neighborhood, many well-attended events and festivals that bring in thousands of people from across the city. But I think there is a need, and we've identified a need for creative and production spaces, spaces that are built specifically for arts use and for cultural exchanges and education, for display, rehearsal, performance spaces, and storage and office space. So I'm here to suggest that with the expansion of Callingwood Library, it can be done in a way that we consider building intentional arts and culture infrastructure spaces into it, to expand our imagination of the library from the traditional concept of a place to go read books, but instead as a place to go consume art and also create art with your community. This could be incorporating a writer's studio or a hub with space that can be used for writers' programs. It could be an office space or program spaces for local artists or arts groups to run their activities. It could be something similar to what we have in downtown Vancouver, the main branch in downtown Vancouver, having an audio recording space for emerging musicians to use, instead of sitting in their garage spaces isolated from the communities. It could be having dedicated gallery space for artists to show their artwork. And the list could go on, but the point is that there's an opportunity with the CAC funds and the prioritization of it being used for the expansion of the library to really build in some of the cultural needs of this neighborhood. And in this arts and culture infrastructure plan, we've done some of the preliminary research with city, with city funds to do that, and also in support of Callingwood Neighborhood House. And we've talked to residents, artists, businesses, planners, and funders around what currently exists in our neighborhood, but more importantly, what opportunities exist around where we can grow and make this community thrive much more. I do have copies of the plan and summaries, if you do want them, I can leave them up here for you. But I'd like to just, again, reiterate my support for the expansion of the library, and also just ask that Renford Callingwood does get considered in future as we're getting more densified, to have more funds and support in terms of expanding our arts and cultural infrastructure so that we can be quite a hub, as we, I think we are already. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much for being here to speak. No questions for you. So we're on to our last three speakers who signed up tonight, and then I'll call if there are any more. Speaker number 13 is Devon Hasek. I've got that right. Followed by Rebecca Hartley, and then Marilyn Hoagum. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Devon Hasek, and I've been a resident for just, it's over five years now in Vancouver. This is the first time I've participated in a public speaking event, and part of the reason for that is that me, my peers and I are entering into a new phase of our lives. We're thinking about how and where we're going to raise families in the city or in this region. It is for that reason, among others, that I support this project. While the city is to be applauded for its policies on rental and social housing, the fact is, more needs to be done to allow young families to be homeowners. Few of my acquaintances will be able to afford a family-sized condo in downtown Vancouver, and no one I know frankly ever expects to be the owner of a single-family home. This is why this project is needed, in this location. 50-50 Joyce is in an area that will allow for families to have the pride of homeownership. It allows for reasonable commute times, and will allow them the space to grow their families. The only critique, the only critique I have of this project is I wish it was allowed a larger FSR or a bit more height. But frankly, since I've been a young guy, I was short enough that I was always wishing to be a bit taller myself. I feel, I feel this project is in a perfect spot to be a gateway into Vancouver. It's a design that is aesthetically pleasing, and it shows off some of the best policies of Vancouver, that we can work, we can play here, and we can live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming out to speak. Appreciate you being here. No questions for you. We are on to our next speaker, which is, who is Rebecca Hartley, speaker number 14. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Rebecca, and I'm here to voice my support for the rezoning of the Joyce, sorry, 50-50 Joyce Street. I'd just like to note that this is my first time coming to speak at a hearing like this. So my partner and I moved to Vancouver five years ago, and while we already own a home here in Vancouver, it's easy to recognize how difficult it is for some people to afford housing, especially for people who are starting to plan for families. I believe West Bank's proposal does a great job of answering this need by providing 65% of this housing for families. It also makes the area more walkable as it provides better lighting and space for small shops to open up. What's more, the community amenity contribution will have a chance to add some more vibrancy and opportunities for community connections. Additionally, given how close this development is to transit, I believe it's important to increase the amount of housing stock available in this area. This will make it more affordable for individuals and families to move into homeownership and will liven up the area. I also think that West Bank's design for the building is very attractive and will add something different to the neighborhood. Ultimately, I think this is a positive change for the area, and I hope you will approve it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for coming to speak. Great job for your first time. Thanks for weighing in on this one. And speaker number 15 is Marilyn Hoagum.
Hello, mayor and council. Just want to correct that, my name is Marilyn Hoagum.
Hoagum, okay. Hoagum, thank you.
Let me, I guess, first start with saying I'm opposed to the development. And it's not like I want to be a naysayer either. I'm not opposed to all development. I'm just opposed to this particular project. But first of all, just to be on a positive side, I'd like to very much echo the comments that were made by a number of people on the importance of supporting amenities in the community, the Callingwood Neighborhood House, safety for pedestrians, whatever the city can do to enhance infrastructure such as transit, and perhaps make a demand on the developer to incorporate parking. If you haven't already done so, I'm sorry, I haven't completely read all of the recommendations. I know that staff did make some important recommendations about balancing the balcony size and that sort of thing. And it's also, as far as I can see, a really architecturally beautiful building, but the problem is, it doesn't fit there. I know that there was talk about more intensive development in the area. Well, the influx of people that are going to be there is already very intensive, and that building would probably suit very well in the west end. But I think it's too high. I think there are too many stories, and maybe it's too blocky for right there. Is the north, for people looking toward the north, I'm concerned about it blocking mountain views. I think there needs to be some design reworking. It's unrealistic to just say, "Okay, let's just scrap the whole project." I doubt you're going to do that, and, and I know that there, that this does fit within the parameters of the precinct, what you allow. But just because it, the height and all of that is allowed by the precinct plan, doesn't mean you have to approve it. One thing I really want to say is, we don't really have a balanced picture here. There were a lot of people, I remember, from Joyce saying they didn't like the new precinct proposal because it allowed excessive development in there. And why aren't those people here tonight? I think it's because they've given up, because they don't feel like they're being heard. And I know that a lot of people are very supportive of this the way it is, who you've heard here in this room tonight. But that isn't really representative of the bigger picture, and the people that do have picture, and the people that do have issues with that degree of density, densification, and especially in light of the inadequate, possibly the inadequate, I shouldn't say inadequate, but possibly inadequate, funding for appropriate amenities. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Right on time. Appreciate you being here tonight. No questions for you. Thank you for your comments and feedback. So we have come to the end of our registered speakers list. I will call three times to see if there are any more speakers here on this final item, item number eight. Please step right up to the microphone and give us your name, please, for the public record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Edwin Yee, and I've been a resident at Collingwood Village for a number of years now, and I'm speaking in support of this development. I chose to live in this neighborhood because of its proximity to the Skytrain station, as well as the BC Parkway, the bike lane that runs parallel to Van Ness Avenue. And living in a transit-oriented development has enabled me to live a car-free life by choice. Collingwood Village is one of BC's largest master-planned community, with a mixture of both condos and purpose-built rental units, rental housing, rental apartments. And West Bank's proposal for 5050 Joyce simply adds to this mix of different housing types in the village, and also adds to the city's very limited housing stock. As Collingwood Village grows, I believe that this new development for more family-oriented suites is a welcome addition. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for stepping up. No questions for you. Are there any more speakers for item number eight? Last call. Any more speakers for item number eight? Okay, seeing none, we can close the speakers list on this final item of the evening, and as we've had a few comments since 5:00 PM, correspondence-wise, we can close our public comment period. And I'll just ask if staff had any closing comments before we close the public hearing component. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Kent Monroe, Assistant Director of Planning. I wanted to say thank you, excuse me, to all the speakers, and I think it illustrates the rigor and level of dialogue that's going on in this community as we begin the implementation of the precinct plan many years to come and many projects to come. One thing I just wanted to point out, way back to speaker number two, raised issues of noise, and I just wanted to address those. Those have been addressed in the report. It is true that the city is reviewing our standards and guidelines for residential development next to rapid transit and Skytrain lines. Those new guidelines have not been yet adopted by council, but they're being developed now. Nevertheless, we've applied the higher standard, the standard that will be coming with those guidelines, to this development. So not only is it written into the bylaw that's before you tonight, the higher standard, it also makes reference that at the subsequent stages of approvals for development permits, that the higher standard for acoustic requirements will be applied. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification, and I'll ask if the applicant team wanted to make any final comments prior to closing the public hearing component? No final comments? Okay, so it's back to council for our decision on whether we're going to do questions and discussion, debate, decision tonight, or if we're going to refer this to a future council meeting, starting tomorrow. Councillor Louie?
Given that it's not too late, I'm prepared to conclude the items and have the debate, but if, because we do have a long day tomorrow, rather than... I'm prepared to do it tonight, but certainly I'd like to hear other comments.
Okay. Councillor DiGiova?
I would probably prefer to do it tomorrow. We've all had a very long day here. I know everyone else here has had a very long day and evening, as well, especially our staff, those who've stayed since the budget this morning, perhaps. So for that reason, I would prefer, actually, and I think perhaps it was Councillor Louie's idea, maybe it was another councillor, it's my recollection, 11:00 PM with an hour break. Is there the opportunity, I suppose, to reconvene in council tomorrow as we do and add this to the agenda for that tomorrow?
Yeah, I can, well, we can just talk about that with the clerk for a sec. Maybe let's just do a quick canvas of others on the queue. Councillor Reimer, preferences?
I would prefer to do it tomorrow. I had some questions for staff, and I also would benefit from having the written comments from the chair in front of me in regards to the letter of agreement that was proposed.
Okay. And Councillor Carr, preferences?
Councillor Reimer's points.
Okay. Councillor Stevenson?
I'd prefer to do it tonight. We have already one going till tomorrow, and I think that'll take us too long tomorrow. And we have everybody here now, so they might as well see the debate, which I don't anticipate is going to be all that long. I think there's a sense about this. No, no, I think there's a sense about this that, certainly from the speakers, so I'd prefer to go ahead.
And anyone else want to weigh in who hasn't on timing?
Yeah, just one more point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have sent questions already, and there were a number of them, to staff that aren't with us now from the item number six. I'd like those answered before I debate and make a decision on that. I have other questions written up now for Mr. Monroe, so, you know, I want them to have a chance to answer those questions. I mean, I just think that it's, certainly for the item six, not possible because our staff aren't here to answer those questions.
Exactly. Oh, yeah. This would just be for this item, for item number eight. Number six is already referred to tomorrow. So we're a bit split on this, and maybe just in terms of questions on number eight, did people have questions for staff or applicants on number eight? You did, okay. Couple people that did. I'm sensing a general high level of fatigue in the room.
You're reading it correct.
I think it's probably best to regroup for tomorrow. So if someone will move that motion? Okay. Moved and seconded that we refer this to tomorrow's council meeting following committee, which will probably be late afternoon, early evening. And any debate? All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries? So a big, big thank you to all of you who've been here to speak to the night, end of the evening here. We will be making next steps on this, debate and decision tomorrow, probably late afternoon, here again in the chambers. So thanks for coming out and staying tonight. Thanks to staff as well. And we have concluded on number eight for this evening, so we will be bringing that back tomorrow. And we need a motion to adjourn this public hearing tonight. Councillor Deal, the second, or Councillor Jang, all those in favor? Any opposed? That carries? We are adjourned for the night. Good night, everyone.